Good evening, and I'm going to call to order the Select Board meeting of June 4th at 6:34 PM. We'll start with our opening remarks, announcements, and agenda review. Just on those lines, I know we've got a couple of people here for specific items on the agenda. We'll try to move you up in the agenda to take care of you guys. It looks like there might be some folks for public comment, which we'll do in just a moment, unless you're here for something on the agenda, things that you want to publicly comment on that are specifically on the agenda, we'll have you wait until that time in our agenda. But if you're coming to just give us a general public comment, we will be happy to hear from you. Do any of the members have anything that they want to add to or notice about the agenda tonight or anything? All right. If not, then we'll see if there's some folks for public comment. I'll just lay out the rules like we usually do. We usually limit to about three minutes or so. We generally won't respond or ask any questions, that sort of thing. We take the information from you and make a note of it, and potentially we'll follow up at a later date and time if necessary. So are there people here for public comment? We'll have you go first. So make sure to just state your name and the reason for being here.
My name is Phil O'Connell. Can I just invite everybody who knows what I have?
So we've got to have you come up to the mic a little bit so they can pick you up for the TV. But thank you, Phil.
My name is Phil O'Connell.
Thank you.
And I have something for each of you.
Oh, thank you.
(mimicking a bell)
Great, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to sit here?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll keep it short and sweet. It is, in fact, a federal crime to conspire or take part in a conspiracy to deny a person their constitutional rights. And this is called prima facie evidence. I did study law. They are admitting that they have been committing this crime ongoingly for two years, and they signed it. So they are, in fact, guilty by their own words and their own signature. And I think there needs to be an investigation. I think we need to know who in Town Hall knew about this, who took part in it. Do they have emails? It's also a crime to destroy evidence. It's also a crime called obstruction of justice. I would like to know, what did you know? When did you know it? What did you do? What did you say? And what part did you play? That's about it.
All right. Thank you very much. So we have a second person, I believe, for public comment?
My name is Bill L. Snasser of the Anne Whalen. Tentatively, I was weeding around the fountain down the street. Is it called the Switzer? Yesterday or the day before, and I realized how slight the water flow and how archaic the design of the -- excuse me, I have Parkinson's. How archaic the design of the fountain is. And I don't know if any of you have ever been to the University of Iowa. Its frontal space, its entrance comprises some archaic monumentalia, and it is eerie. And this fountain comprises a similar eeriness, and I would like to suggest that some high school class, design class, or Amherst College, or even UMass, be given the perhaps competitive assignment of designing an inexpensive but more dynamic fountain for Amherst, Massachusetts. That's about all.
Just making a note. So next on our agenda, we'll skip ahead since we have some guests here today. And so we'll go into Section 7, which is licenses, public way, and metered parking reservations. And so, I think, for no reason at all, I'm going to select you to come up and tell us about your event, which I understand is on our consent calendar, but we can pull it out. So if you'd want to tell us a little bit, it gives you an opportunity to advertise. Not that there's any new thing relative to what you're asking for from us, but it's an opportunity on TV to tell about your event. So if you would be so kind to introduce yourself, then tell us about your event.
Sure, thanks. Hi, I'm Jen Labelle with Big Brothers Big Sisters of Hampshire County, and I come before you tonight to request some parking meters be bagged at various times for our event, Amherst Crafts on the Common. And this will help us get our artisans in and get them unloaded quickly and help us set up for the craft fair, and then later help us break down the craft fair by allowing artisans to get their vehicles close by and loaded quickly at the end of the show.
Great. And so the date of the event is the...
So it's Saturday, June 23rd, and the event runs from 9:00 to 4:00, but the preparation starts much earlier. It starts at 6:00 AM, so we've actually requested that the meters be bagged the night before to make sure that they're free and open for the artisans the next morning.
Great. So the couple of questions I'm going to ask relative to this are, have you reached out to -- because if I'm remembering correctly, I'm looking at the map...
The farmer's market?
The farmer's market and the Lord Jeffrey Inn both. It's good to be aware so that they know, because they might also want to inform their overnight guests to park in a different place than they might otherwise, so...
Sure. I did reach out to the manager of the farmer's market via email. I've not yet heard back, so I'll try to do that again. And I've not yet reached out to the Lord Jeffrey Inn, but I'm familiar with the manager, and I'd be happy to do that.
Great. I just think it helps sort of smooth it all...
Absolutely.
...as far as setup and that sort of thing. And the request, as far as actual spots that you're looking for, is the same as it has been? Has that changed at all?
I think so. I tried to verify the number of parking spaces before sending the request. I think it has been different in different years, but basically I was hoping to get as much parking along either side as I could, again, just to expedite the process, getting people unloaded quickly and then allowing them to move their vehicles out of the way for others.
Great, thank you. Do my colleagues have questions? Or comments, or want to make a motion, or any of the above?
So as we've repeatedly asked of staff, we now have right here noted on our motion sheet that it's the exact same request as 27 in previous, 2017 in previous. So that's really helpful to know, because I do know that it has varied a little bit over the years. But knowing that it's been this way for a while is helpful.
So did someone want to make a motion?
I move to approve the reservation of metered parking spaces bordering the Town Common, 13 on the east side of South Pleasant Street, and 21 on the west side of Boltwood Avenue, both beginning at College Street and progressing north to the intersection of Spring Street, beginning at 9:00 PM on Friday, June 22, 2018, to 7:00 AM Saturday, June 23, 2018, for the first five metered parking spaces to South Pleasant Street, beginning at the intersection of Spring Street moving south, and the remaining metered spaces to 9:00 AM Saturday, June 23, 2018, and on Saturday, June 23, 20... We've got a problem. I have to stop back, because that should have been the Fri...
9:00 PM to 9:00 AM?
Yeah, so actually, I guess it should be...
So they're overnight until the following morning?
Right.
And then, I think it's, there's a group that go until 7:00 AM and a group that go till 9:00 AM from Friday night into the next morning, and then a separate block of time in the late afternoon.
Would you like me to clarify?
As I look at it, I think it's just confusing.
You mean where it goes from 9:00 PM the night before, because they have to bag the meters before people come in, to 7:00 AM, and then another remaining space is till 9:00 AM?
Right.
And then from Saturday, well, and then on Saturday, the 23rd, it's 3:30 to 6:30. It is confusing, but I think it's...
I'm wondering if there might have been a typo?
Yeah.
No, it's just awkwardly worded.
It's awkwardly worded. I think, though, what I would like to do, if there's agreement from all, is if we take a recess later to look at the wording of it and to come back and pass it tonight with just revisions that we might make to clarify wording, so that you don't need to stay. We promise we are going to do it, if you ask. But I think that it needs to be worded a little bit more clearly, and then I think it'll be easier to implement.
Thanks. The goal is really to just, like I said, have those spaces right at 6:00 AM, make sure they're all clear, allow the people attending as vendors to unload quickly, open the spaces back up at 9:00 AM on the 23rd, and then later...
Close them off.
...close them off, so that when the fair ends at 4:00, the spaces are free, people can move their vehicles back, load up quickly, and clear the park efficiently.
If I might, I think we understand that. It's just we're trying to make sure that literally what our motion says is what we're explaining.
Got it.
So maybe we would say the motion has might be slightly amended to clarify.
Right. So we'll check our language, but otherwise, it's not, I don't think anyone has any issue with the request.
And I think you are very familiar with the request, so...
Yeah, no, it's a great event. We appreciate having it as part of the summer activities in town.
Thank you.
And we always wish great success and great weather for you for this, to make it a really wonderful event.
Thanks.
And we appreciate your cooperation with the farmer's market.
So I can second the motion to perhaps be amended if needed.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, I think we could go ahead and vote that it'll be fixed later if it needs to be. I mean, the problem is, we're trying to do too many things in one sentence. I mean, it's just a bad habit we've developed.
Too many days and too many PMs.
It's a bad habit we've developed when it could easily be separate sentences and communicate quite effectively what we know to be true from the little green and red dots. It's all very straightforward.
All right. So do you want to take a vote on the motion, or do you want to wait and...
I think we should, to be amended later tonight. Does that work for people? We may not even need to change anything, except to put like a period and a capital in there somewhere.
Okay. So is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's unanimous with one person absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So next, we'll have our other guests come up, if you would be so kind, and to tell us about the reason you're here, who you are and why you're here, and then we'll do our bit of business with you and give you an opportunity to... But tell us a little bit about why you're with us this evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christopher Ware.
And I'm Alex Washett, who works at Jake's Restaurants. And really nice to meet you all. Yeah, we just recently acquired the former bread and butter restaurant space in North Amherst in the district, and we're looking to expand our restaurant, Jake's, in Northampton on this side of the bridge.
Yeah, so we're here to apply for the Common Vic license, you know, as a first step. I've been working with the permitting department in order to get our ducks in a row with inspections and such, but that's about where we are.
Questions for them from the board?
Just a statement that I've enjoyed Jake's for breakfast, Jake's for lunch in North Ham... when I've been in Northampton, and we look forward to having the same quality of establishment in North Amherst.
We plan to provide that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
This is a chance for a little free promo as well, so I'm wondering if you want to tell us, you know, kind of what your vision is for the restaurant? Is it going to be exactly like Northampton, or same menu? Or do you have some other ideas, or might you later change your hours to do more things? Just the general vision, and gives you some...
Yeah, so we plan to start off with kind of a direct mimic of the menu, but we do have kind of a much larger kitchen, so we can get much more creative. And the dining area really lends itself to a more kind of contemporary menu, too. So we may, in the future, expand to try some dinners or some special events. We do plan to go for a full liquor license, as we've seen that they are available within town. I've been working with the permit department and with zoning. It could be some small hurdles, but they assure me that it's something we could go for down the road. Yeah.
Please follow up.
Yes.
So I'm noticing that your Common Vic's license is seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Yes, that's correct.
So is that because it's coincident with your other permits, but you would come back and modi... I think it's pretty easy to modify that, should you wanted to...
Yes. I've been made aware of the process that we'd have to go through in order to do that once we do obtain the liquor license and choose to extend our hours.
Yeah, we don't, we don't plan on, you know, changing much in the get-go for at least the first year. We're really just trying to focus on, you know, operations and mirroring the same hours of operation that we have in Northampton, which is 7:00 to 3:00.
It seems to work as a model for us, yeah.
I just have a couple of questions associated, a couple associated with the actual application we have in front of us. Is it more accurate to say Christopher Ware or Chris Ware, because it says Chris Ware in our motion? And would you, what would you prefer? Because it says Christopher on the application.
Oh, Christopher is fine.
Great. So we tend, we try not to use diminutives unless people ask for them.
Oh, okay.
Great. And I'm sorry, and you're Alexander?
Alexander.
Great. Sometimes we have people in front of us who aren't on the license, which is totally fine, because we really just list one person, but that way our minutes are accurate. So thank you, Mr. Brockman, for making a note of that. And the other thing, while I want to enthusiastically welcome you to Amherst, and we're really thrilled that the space is going to be reprogrammed, and we're especially thrilled it's going to be by someone with such great experience in Northampton that I think we've probably all gone to at one point or another, I do want to also say that, of course, as obviously you would be aware, the liquor license is a separate conversation that is not automatic.
Oh, yes, of course.
We look forward to having that conversation with you when you're ready.
And I've been made aware of, yes, yes, yes.
And I'm glad that you've already been working closely enough with staff to understand, like, when you want to have a special dinner, what you need to do in order to do that.
Right, definitely.
So that'll be great.
Mr. Brockman, did you have something? When do you think you'll be open?
We're shooting for maybe soft openings in August, and hopefully full swing for September once all the students come back into town. That's what we're shooting for.
Fantastic. It's great to have you.
Yeah, thank you. We're really glad to be here. Yeah, we're excited about the opportunity. It's beautiful. It's three years old, it's modern, it's, yeah, it's perfect.
Yeah, and everyone we've met here in town has just been really warm and very, you know, kind, generous, and supportive. It's a, it's a great, you know, kind of welcome feeling that we've gotten here, so it's good to hear.
Yeah, certainly has been.
It's a nice town.
And I might mention, that population is about to increase in their neighborhood.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Yeah, with the development across the street, it's actually going to be pretty, hopefully pretty good for us, and for North Amherst, you know?
A lot of workers.
It's a great area. Oh, it's true. That's true. And then 140 apartments in about 18 months, or something like that, so it should be good. Yeah.
Yeah, it's an exciting time up there.
Yeah, it is.
Absolutely. Is there further question or comment for this? Would someone like to make the motion?
I move to approve the application of Jake's Eggs, Inc., Doing Businesses Jake's, for a Common Vicular license to operate on the premises of 68 Coles Road, seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Christopher Ware, manager slash co-owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous with one member absent. So thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, really appreciate it.
See you soon.
So now, we've jumped a couple hoops there. We'll go back to our sort of regular agenda order that we typically follow. And so next up is, on our action discussion items, 4A, which is the Mill Street Bridge project update. Mr. Mooreing is here to walk us through that a little bit, and then there'll be some additional
So in your packet, I believe you have the really complicated Mass Highway drawings with all the details for...
Unreadable.
The fonts aren't small enough.
It's actually very, very good there. I mean, you could actually build a bridge with those, so if you wanted to. So the contractor, ETNL, has moved on site. They moved on site last week. They're starting to get ready to close the bridge permanently tomorrow. The fences will go up, and the bridge will be closed, and they'll start work shortly thereafter. So the work is to take out the existing bridge, to put in a larger bridge. If you look at the profile on the first sheet, it does show that the new bridge is about 57 feet long, so it is longer. The length is to accommodate the stream and the river below, so we can do away with the scourish conditions we have at the old bridge. And then we have it laid out as a one-travel lane for vehicles and a multi-use path, so that was approved. There will be some need at some point for the Select Board to make the final determination about it's officially one-way. And we are recommending it's one-way uphill or to the south. We're doing that because if you're, the side to be on is on the right side, eh, well, you're on the right side no matter which way you're going, aren't you? You would be on the west side, and if you actually were to lose control, you'd go into the wooded area around here in the curve. If we went downhill, and the sidewalk would be, excuse me, you'd go uphill this side, and the sidewalk is on here, so if you lost control, you would go off into the woods, you wouldn't cross the sidewalk. If you actually changed the direction, went downhill, the natural side for the sidewalk is on the west side. If you lost control going down the hill, you'd careen across the sidewalk. So that was one of the reasons we're doing it. The other reason was, we were told, a lot of people like to stand on the bridge and look at the waterfall. So having the multi-use path on the dam side accommodates people for looking at the waterfall without standing in the drive, in the travel lane of vehicles. So that's why it was set up that way. So work is, will begin next, work in earnest will begin next week, I assume. They're just closing it off this week and doing some other prep work. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Length of time of construction?
The contract is for one year.
Mr. Steinberg?
I was just curious as to whether there are any traffic engineering reasons or state law reasons why one-way is required for a one-lane bridge, because I know of plenty of places in the country where there are one-lane bridges that people just alternate direction on.
That's correct, but most of those bridges, it's one-way all the way at the bridge, so... You've got to turn it on. So usually, usually what happens in that case is, this is the bridge right here. It would be two ways on both sides and only one way across the bridge. So we're proposing that it's be one-way all the way up to State Street, and that there be a multi-use path all the way across the bridge and up to State Street. If you were to do something like that, you'd have to have some, you'd have to have some type of signalization to make sure everyone gets across and it's clear, and then, so that's why we didn't do it that way.
Good. Sort of follow up on that just a little bit with the multi-use, excuse me, with the multi-use path. Is all of that part of the Mass DOT project, or is it just the bridge part itself and the rest of it is our project?
The Mass DOT project, let me move a little bit. So the multi-use path on the bridge project will start here at this driveway, and will end right here, and then we'll pick up the rest.
Mr. Steinberg's question reminded me, I know along the way that conversations come up, been brought up about the two-way alternating or not, and it was my understanding that while that is done and can be done, and Hadley just had that during the construction, it's really not a good thing to do. Not only is it the difference that you described, but I know for some people, the fact that it's going to be one-way has expressed how inconvenient that is, because you have to circle, but I understood and actually believe that alternating is really not the safest, most prudent way to set this up. So in addition to what you described, if you want to comment on that.
If you, if you were to do it that way and still have pedestrian bicycle use of this area, it would make it a much more, much more difficult area to traverse. So this is a highly-used pedestrian bicycle area in the summer, and to have two-way traffic and the bicycles and pedestrians, it just, will just kind of make it really a lot more difficult. If you had a straight bridge, you had no, this curve right here, this blind curve, also causes a great deal of concern as drivers zip around, as they used to before the bridge was closed. If those weren't there, then having maybe an alternating at the bridge would be fine, but you put all these things together, the blind curve, the pedestrians and bicyclists trying to use this as well, you actually add a lot of confusion that makes it more difficult to have an alternating bridge there.
And the reason I wanted to follow up a little is, you know, we're out and about, and people ask us, hey, why did they do that? I wanted it to be this other one, and it's, it's good for us to have some true, but factual responses, so we can explain it in just layperson's terms, so, because people ask us these things.
I am convinced that with the, when you pointed out about the multi-use path, that that creates a distinction from any place that I've ever seen where it's been a workable, and I have seen places where it's been workable, but as you point out, this would not be one of them.
You're satisfied?
Yes, we were.
Along those lines, it would be different if this bridge just went to a neighborhood that was a neighborhood that the same people had lived there 50 years, and it was just inconvenient for them to now get out of their house. But while it is certainly inconvenient for some people and has been in variations over the last several years, we have new users here all the time, and so that, that helps me adjust my head around all of this, too, because we will have so many visitors and people who don't normally drive down that way, and it'll be a new multi-use path, et cetera. So it, it's not just the same five people using that, that direction all the time.
Mr. Brockman?
So this will be, this is for your consideration, not to decide tonight, but in context of a larger sort of traffic pattern that we'll be talking about as the next agenda item, that you'll take into consideration, not because the bridge construction will take some time, there'll be some time to digest what it's going to look like. So these things are sort of connected as well.
So unless there's other...
The bridge is connected to the road, which is connected to the traffic pattern.
So Mr. Mooreing?
And then, if you also get asked the question, why don't you just use the wooded land beside it to open it up? That is conservation land on the corners. So this, this corner here is conservation land, and this corner on this side of the bridge is conservation land. So in order to do that, because of the way the state has it, we'd have to go to the legislature to get that removed, and we have to replace that conservation land. So it wasn't an easy fact of just also to widen the bridge out. That was another issue that was discussed.
Great. Question. How long has the bridge been closed already?
I believe we closed it in 2012.
So anything open will be an improvement for people?
Yes. Leave it closed long enough.
Proved over. Nothing. Take it away long enough.
Right. I think, you know, my thought about a one-way is just, even though, typically when you have a, a single lane but two-directional bridge, it's a very, very low volume, usually very rural circumstance, and while, and this just doesn't satisfy that, especially when you get the multi-use path, I think, so...
Especially in the summer.
Right.
I, I don't want to get into grand debates on this, but I do know of two circumstances where there are crossings of the Erie Canal in an urban area with fairly heavy traffic, and it is that way. But I don't think they're analogous for the reasons that Mr. Mooreing has already stated, and I think that's a very important point.
Are there other questions about the bridge proper? If not, we'll ask Mr. Mooreing to take us into our next agenda item, which is the, the first look at Mill Street and State Street traffic patterns, which is sort of building off of the bridge project. Pardon the pun.
So when the Public Works Committee started talking about the bridge and aligning the bridge and how to change the bridge when it was closed, that's, that time the Conservation Department was also going through their Puffers 2020 study. So there was a lot of people who were talking about what to do about Puffers Pond and improving Puffers Pond, who also came. One of the issues was, was more pedestrian access around Puffers and from the bridge and tying the two, the south beach and the north beach together. So a concept came up, and it was kind of tossed around, and then recently we've started tossing this concept around again. And this is just a... tossing this concept around again, and this is just a concept, and this is just to get us started and to talk, start talking about it. What we would do is we would take State Street, overhears the, overhears the bridge, this is Mill Street, comes into State Street. This would be one-way, and then State Street would be two-way for a short period because we have to access this one driveway. This house, 172 State Street, only has one driveway now and it is off of State Street now. And then, but once we get past this driveway, we make the, the road that runs along Puffers Pond and through this area, one-way. We would move the parking to the right, we would make it one-way to the north, kind of northeast, and that way, we could make it a little more, a little calmer, a little safer. Right now, it's two-lane traffic. There's approximately, there is parking on the, on this side here, actually, that's the north side. There's no parking on the left side along, along the pond. So, if we move and we stripe it the way it's striped now, we have thirty-six existing spaces and we dropped down to twenty-nine spaces supposedly. To count spaces, we had to choose a number, we chose twenty-two feet as a space, but when you're out at Puffers Pond, there are no spaces marked out, people park as close as they want to, so, even if we change it, they'll still be able to park as close as they want to in this section. We came up to the, this is the access to the beach where the handicap spaces are. We chose to take this whole section and do away with the parking, because this is the point where people access emergency vehicles or any other type of vehicle, the maintenance vehicles would access the beach, the South Beach from this area, so we got rid of all the parking, this is the parking on the bridge, we took that parking out. There are some little structural issues with the, the bridge, bridge abutments and the wing walls around the culverts there that we thought if we moved traffic to the middle and got rid of parking on the sides, that might help it for us. So, then you have walkways on both sides of the bridge, and then traffic through the middle. You do lose eight spaces, there's ten altogether right now. You keep the two handicap spaces and you lose the other ones. As you go up, you cross the bridge, we looked at getting away from having parking on the riverside, that's to help stabilize the banks and make the river better. We put angle-in parking along this side, the north side, and then we still keep it one-way. There are two handicap spaces here which would stay. We go up, through this area here, it's very tight, the trees don't allow you to have angle-in parking. We shifted the road over, and then we start having angle parking on this side. We continue that angle parking all the way up to about this point, and that fits now. If you're at State Street and you're walking, these are the areas where the boulders are on the right side of the road as you're heading towards bridge. There's a line of boulders and there's a couple trees and another line of boulders. We would push those boulders back and allow you to angle in parking there. Once you get to, so... Roughly, there's seventy spaces along this area here now, because people can park on both sides, we restrict parking to one side, you get forty spaces out after that. Once we get to this point here, past the angle parking, we go back to parallel parking on one side only, because it's, we're making it one-way. They're parking on the pavement, and then we put in a turnaround. So, the one-way will end at this point, this is roughly about two-hundred, three-hundred feet from the railroad bridge. This turnaround is to accommodate the people who live on State Street on the north end of the railroad bridge. They have two-way traffic and we didn't want to take away their two-way traffic from them, so if a delivery truck or someone who's not familiar with the area came down from this area, they can come down, turn around, and head back out without going one-way down the road. So, in this section, there's about fifty-six spaces that exist, and thirty of those spaces would remain. So, this is kind of what we're proposing, there's been some comments about how, what to do for pedestrians. We've talked about taking the travel way, which in most cases is shown on here being fourteen feet, and striping it for as ten feet and having a four-foot area for people to walk that's sort of striped that way. This is a walking area, this is the travel way, and this is the parking area. So, there's all sorts of little concepts we're talking about, there's been some discussion about two-way bicycling and how we would accommodate that, which gets a little tighter and we have to do some, I mean, we have to do some innovative things to accommodate that as well, but that's our proposal and it is the start of this conversation. The Transportation Advisory Committee has seen it, and the Conservation Commission has seen it as well, but we want to kind of talk about this. The time period is, is that we would talk about it and maybe have something that we can install for September before the stu, around the students' return, after the season's over, and then it'd be in full operation for the next, the next beach season.
So, just to add to that, the Assistant Town Manager, the Superintendent Public Works, and the Police Chief and Fire Chief, and I all worked, walked the entire area mainly to talk about the public safety requirements that the police and fire thought they had to address, they wanted to have addressed as we start to think through this. And in addition, we wanted to have the least intrusive kind of change so that maintain, the entire road maintained its sort of rural character, which is really kind of a special part of that road, but try to accommodate as many parking spaces as we could. Right now, it's, you know, if you drive up there in the summer, it's very dangerous, I think, and that's why, one of the things that we were trying to address with this, this accommodation.
Ms. Brewer?
So, you know that one of the first questions is going to be about parking spaces, and all the people who like to imagine people are going to stop driving cars, but we know that's not happening immediately. Are we really talking about a net loss of sixty-four spaces?
If you can't consider a space between two feet, yes.
And, what is our theory as to what we're doing with all those people, since obviously not every space is in use all the time now, but sometimes they are, and so, that's a lot of cars.
We don't, we don't see much parking up towards the other, the upper end in this area.
So, that's not feeling like as big of an impact in that section?
That's not used a hundred percent of the time. There, there could be some spillage, and we've talked about there might be spillage on the other side of State Street. There's only, there's no parking on one side of that side of State Street already, but we have, we have thought about that, we are a little concerned.
Stiff, yes.
Sort of like when you squeeze the Eclair, it kind of goes somewhere, so we are a little concerned of that.
It's cool.
Well, I, I mean, I had, I had that concern, and it sounds like you're not going to stripe the spaces because you want it to be, I guess there's a bunch of small cars, you get, and people are reasonable about how they pull in, and a large RV thing, but I'm wondering if there's any opportunity to have like an overflow space that's maybe a little further, but it's like everything's full, but if you know if you go just a little further, there's room for twenty more cars, not necessarily a lot, I mean, that kind of squeezing the Eclair, but you've got to walk a little further, and I'm wondering also, I know, you know, this is just the concept kind of thing, so we're not, we're not going to pick on it too much, but the signage, because if we're going to do this, we have to have a way to make it clear to people what the new rules are and think about how we're going to enforce it, because my limited experience on the parking committee without the accompanying signage and enforcement, and then that gets into this sort of rural character, because once you start putting in the lines and showing that the other handicap ones are handicapped and you do know that it's not going to be as rural, but it's going to be safer, so you're balancing safety and economy with, you know, the way it used to be, you know, when I started going there fifty years ago and it was like totally funky, and that's kind of the charm, but it doesn't work with ninety cars there.
We've thought about that, and it is a delicate situation, we've talked about just reducing the signage, keeping it as low as we can, and doing more pavement striping on, on the road so that people can see what's on the road, so things like that will probably be used more than actually just trying to put signs up that are there all the time.
Park at your own risk kind of.
Mr. Steinberg?
So, I have two different things, but I'll stick with parking first. Is there any concern that on the busiest days, when Puffers Pond is having the highest demand, that there'll be parking going up Sand Hill Road and what the consequences of that might be if it were to happen?
We, we've kind of floated that idea too. It might happen, and Sand Hill's a little harder to park on, and people may not want to park on it because of the steepness of the hill. We're thinking more it'd be State Street, then it gets more parking on it than the other side of State Street, it'll get much more parking than Sand Hill, but then again, we're open to look at it. If we actually were to do this, we are taking the low, low-key, low-tech approach, so if we decided to change it, and the only thing that would be there that's not there now would be this turnaround at the very end. That would be the only thing we have to build to accommodate this type of trial. We can paint out the other lines and get rid of them if we need to, if it doesn't really function well, but we think it'll, we think this'll do it.
Just, we're sort of sharing some brainstorming. The low-tech, low-messaging, using striping, there may be some ways with some landscape architecture thinking to use some landscaping to also demarcate and suggest to people. I know it's less of the, you know, just strewn boulder look, but, you know, some planting areas or some other use of stone and whatever to, that match materials that are there to help guide people to where they're supposed to go, and it, it is more of a, a little bit more built environment, but matching materials that are around there, small trees, whatever to add to that.
So, my other issue, and Mr. Zemec might help me with this one, but if I am visualizing this correctly, where you have on the lower, the bump out of the lower part of the road as we're looking at it with the two handicap places, that's where the Robert Frost Trail comes in on one side, I believe?
It's, yeah, it's locally called the Kevin Flood Trail. It goes over the Robert Francis Bridge, so there are two handicap spaces there because technically it is an ADA trail, so it's crushed stone, TRG, yeah, it's still in pretty good shape.
So, it's, but it is marked as the Robert Frost Trail, and then the Robert Frost Trail continues just before the bridge that's to the left there, which means you're going to get a lot of people walking with kids who are going to be going through that area that has a lot of parking places there. What are the safety factors for people with or without young kids walking the Robert Frost Trail along there?
I think that's a great point, and it's good feedback for us to take tonight, as Guilford said, this is, you know, he and I have been talking about this for over five years. As Mr. Bachman said, we, we did a walk-around with, with public safety, all of us, and, Guilford's team designed this, but no, we need to look at where people are going, what are the desire lines out there? If they're coming down the Robert Frost from the east and cutting over at the Kevin Flood Trail and then going around the perimeter trail, as, as Mr. Steinberg said, we need to look at that, and our people are going to be backing out of there. As Mr. Moore said earlier, we, we, we want to try to achieve a walking path, a safe walking path on one side, preferably the pond side of State Street, and we haven't quite achieved that yet, we run into some wetlands, we run into slope, it gets a little more challenging. I will say that I look at this as an incremental change. You may recall, as, as Mr. Moore said, the Puffers Pond 2020 group looked very extensively at the parking issue, and what they concluded was, you know, simply the road and the pond has exceeded its carrying capacity, and this is an incremental way, even if we shrink parking a little bit, we, we also talked about adding more bike racks. There's only one bike rack at Puffers Pond, there should be multiple bike, places for people to leave bicycles. Again, I, I, I respect Ms. Brewer's comment about, you know, people aren't going to necessarily change overnight their, their, their driving habits, but we do need to bring the parking and the safety issues under control, and I look at this as, as an incremental, in keeping with the rural road solution. I will say that Puffers Pond 2020 actually came up with a proposal to put, I'm going to say a fifty...
Use a pointer, use a pointer.
Oh, yeah. A fifty to sixty-five, I think is my recollection, space parking area up here in the woods. So, I think that's a more impactful solution, but it's something we could look at in the future if these more subtle, you know, incremental steps don't work.
Well, just to play devil's advocate, I'm sort of doing that all day, having that almost as overflow, because, you know, designing for the three hottest, heaviest-use days might be overkill, but there are different materials for overflow parking for that kind of event where when it finally pushes to that, you have that there, but it's still kind of grassy, you know, there's different materials. The problem with incremental is then you have to come back in ten years and make another change and another change. There's a part of me that's like, figure it out, do a really good design, do it once, people hate it for two days because it's a change, and then you're done, and like, instead of a little pain, a little pain, oh, now we're changing it, I mean, having a really good plan and really executing it, and then, I mean, not that you don't always have to revisit stuff, but there's something about the incremental, like, you know, a toe in boiling water and then you're, you know, and again, I would also add having some landscape architecture ideas integrated into how we do this, not just the engineering part.
Totally appreciate those comments. I will say that this is with almost no budget as well. To do a parking lot here, you're probably talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars.
So, maybe you demarcate that as the future overflow so that people know that that's in the plan and then you, you know...
We also think that these modest improvements and changes to parking will be received better by the Conservation Commission, but to actually do a parking lot there is a pretty substantial, if we're doing it all on conservation land versus this is mostly in the public way and then slightly beyond. Now, again, Puffers Pond 2020 did talk about that. Again, I will say, and I was fully supportive of us looking at a parking fee down the road as well. At the time, five, seven years ago, we were squarely looking at that to try to fund some of the improvements up there. We can't charge a fee for entrance to Puffers Pond, but we can, according to town council, charge a parking fee for, for parking up there. So, in any event, it's something to look at.
I can just add one more, probably not very PC remark. I don't like providing inadequate parking as a way to somehow theoretically force people to use their bike more. I mean, I think if people are going to access this by vehicles, then we have to think of a way to make that work, and it's all a compromise, but the idea that, well, if you take away half the parking, more people will bike, it just, that just doesn't work.
It wasn't really...
But I do support charging for parking, it's a public resource.
I wasn't really implying that, what I was saying is to design for three to five peak days in the summer.
That I get.
It's a lot of impact for three to five full days.
That I understand.
So, the city's been struggling with Walton Pond with this exact same thing, and they, they could have acres and acres of parking, but they specifically limit the number of cars because they, the pond can only handle so many cars, and then what happens is it fills up at a certain time and they put out the word, "It's filled up, it won't reopen until 3:00 PM", and so, there's a lot of resource, public resources like this that struggle with oversubscription, and while they could build more parking to accommodate all the cars, it would be worse for the, for the pond itself, and so I think that's some, we don't, we don't know what that number is for how many cars people should be using it, maybe we do, maybe Puffers Pond 2020 has it, but I think that's sort of the starting point, like how many cars do we want to have?
Ms. Brewer?
So, along those lines, I guess one of the things I would ask you to think about, as I know you've already thought about in so many ways, is if all the parking spaces we had now, quote-unquote, that people are theoretically using on perhaps those three hottest days, is that too many in terms of impact on the pond? Because we don't have a way of saying the pond's closed. We don't, it isn't like Mill River Recreation Area where people go there to play baseball, tennis, walk on the trails, use the pool, use the pavilion, and if it overflows in terms of parking, yes, then you're kind of stuck and you have to take the bus, basically, but there's still capacity there for all those things, there, there is still space left for humans to appropriately use the materials that are there, even if all the parking spaces are filled up. That may not be true with Puffers Pond, it may be, as you say, that really, this is the appropriate limit to protect the pond. The difficulty I run into beyond figuring out a parking scheme that's going to work for people is that Puffers Pond has sometimes felt like it's become some people's part... is that Puffers Pond has sometimes felt like it's become some people's park that go there all the time regularly and is maybe not feeling as accessible to some of the rest of the community when they move in, when they try and go there at a particular busy time, and it feels like it's not their place to go. And so I want to be, somehow address that. And we're going to lose at least thirty parking spaces of probably regularly used spaces. I mean, we'll have to come up with that number, but, because you're saying that some of those weren't actually used. But of the net loss of the quite large number, then you're actually, you know, at sixty-four, maybe it's not sixty-four, maybe it's thirty-five. But that's huge for, not just three hot days, but twenty hot days in the summer. And so I hope that we can find a way to continue to talk to the community about this so it doesn't feel like it's excluding people who don't get there at the crack of opening time. And then it's just their backyard for the rest of the day, and the rest of the community can't use it. Not saying there's a magical answer.
Yeah. So I think what it speaks to is that it will have to be more actively managed. And that's, you know, that's what other places do is they put out the word through Twitter and Facebook and every, and on their websites that we're at capacity now, we're at eighty percent capacity for parking areas, and people are alerted to that. But it takes, it will require some active management. The other thing I hope that this addresses is, I mean, we all drive through there, that people are walking in the middle of the road and people are trying to drive at the same time with little kids dragging stuff. I just don't think that that's a very safe type of thing.
Works in P. D. M.
And I think, I had to go back to Mr. Zomek, probably knows what I'm referring to, but a lot of people from Cushman and the immediate surrounding areas walk on a trail that starts fairly near to the Cushman General Store, across the, just across the Cushman Common, starts at the railroad track and goes down. And they use that as their way to get to the pond. And that's why I was worried about the traffic route also, because we don't want to make it more difficult for people to walk to the pond.
Yeah, there are two trails that come down from Cushman, kind of one from Pine Street and then one from further out near the railroad tracks. And we can look at that, Mr. Mooreing and I can look at that as well.
Correct.
I did just want to point out that we're actually not talking about the only parking at Puffers Pond on State Street because there is the parking for the North Beach, and then there's additional informal parking along Mill Street. There's a pull-in there that can probably accommodate ten. And then the parking lot up at the North Beach, I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but I'm going to say it's twelve to fifteen there. That was created, I believe, after the last dredging about probably seventeen, eighteen years ago. And we've talked about, again, Puffers Pond 2020 looked into whether we could increase the size of the parking lot in the old gravel pit. I did just want to comment on Mr. Bauchman's point. I couldn't agree more that in the future, we are going to have to more actively manage Puffers Pond. And to some degree, it's kind of back to the future. We used to do that. But back in about 2006, 2007, when budgets were very tight, we eliminated the funding for that. We had coverage at that time from eleven AM to seven PM throughout the summer. So we certainly know what those numbers are.
I just wonder, while you're tossing all these ideas around, maybe looking at charging for the parking, whether it's meters, and if that would support the parking enforcement that would have to go with it and still generate enough additional income that could be dedicated to things like managing the pond or other improvements to the pond, where the money collected there is dedicated to the pond. But to cover somebody actually walking up and down for those meters for, you know, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Because to me, the trade-off of paying for parking and getting to use that resource is quite fair. And then maybe, you know, I have no idea how the money works out, but maybe that would help with the active, some of the active management, which I think it's probably time to provide.
Puffers Pond 2020 recommended a resident fee and a non-resident fee, so you could buy a season pass. And then many state parks now have solar powered pass ticket booths, if you will. They're very, very subtle.
And I'm actually thinking of metered parking, but that's a different way of looking at it, the use of pass. You're laughing because you know how popular.
So in my prior employment, my previous town, Manchester, they now, they started with a fee of one dollar for anybody to walk onto the beach, and it had to apply to everybody. And now it's up to seven dollars to walk onto the beach for anybody to walk on. But town residents can buy a season pass for like twenty dollars or something like that. So you get a little tag that you slip, you take, but that's the sort of, all the out-of-counters who come in, they were trying to.
Support, but somebody has to be there.
It's an actual collection system, yeah.
But weren't we told we couldn't charge admission? I mean, that's interesting and useful information, but we can't simply apply that because I believe we were just told we can't charge admission to the pond. We can only charge for parking.
That's my understanding from Coleman and Page.
So different historical ways of doing things that we may or may not agree with.
That person would be collecting parking fees instead of park fees or beach fees.
Right. They collect parking fees too.
Right.
They do both. There's more than one way to.
Thank you.
So are there other questions or comments for?
Looking forward to it coming back again.
Absolutely. Yes.
Can we migrate to one thing that's in your packet? And this is a letter you received about the dam, the dike. So I want to make sure people understand what that letter references, so, because it's different than what most people think because of the terminology that was used in that letter.
Do you have?
We have our two experts here anyway.
Right.
So I think we'll be fairly brief on this because I know you have a long agenda. Mr. Mooreing and I can stick around for a few minutes to talk about this. But, um, yes, the letter that we received from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, Office of Dam Safety, refers to the dike. There's a dam, of course, that we all know. And then there's a dike which is to the east of Mr. Sharkin's property at Mill Street, number sixty-four, the house. And that is an earthen structure that was built many, many years ago as part of the retention of water in this old mill pond. And as the letter indicates, now what's interesting is in the front page, the first page, it says dike. Then throughout the rest of the document, it vacillates between dike and dam, and I think that confuses a lot of people. They're clearly talking about the dike and the dam itself. We have inspected on a regular basis. The town engineer is part of that process. We test the emergency outflow of the pond regularly. I believe it's every two years we have it inspected by an engineer. The dike is on a different schedule. And yes, in 2016, Office of Dam Safety did receive a report that indicates there are some inadequacies in that dike, some undercutting of the bank. Essentially, the guidance or requirement for a dike is not dissimilar to what we do at many of our reservoirs. The state would not want trees to grow into that earthen structure. That can undermine the structural integrity of that structure. So I've already reached out to Mr. Sharkin. We plan to meet. We believe we have an easement to maintain that. And it would require some removal of trees and perhaps some armoring of that dike. So I wanted to assure you and the public that we are on top of that, and we will be working with an engineering firm and my staff with guidance from the town engineers on how to proceed with that. But the dam is safe. The dike is not compromising the safety of Puffers Pond or those people downstream at this time.
I appreciate you stating that since the letter actually indicates otherwise. And so the letter's not in our packet, and so that, I know it was emailed to us ahead of time, but it's not in here. And so maybe we could have it in our next packet with a memo that basically just says those few sentences. We're working on it. We're fully aware of what the circumstances are here. And that way, it's together so that that letter's not just floating around out there in the ether by itself. Because like many things, they make it sound scary, just like when we do statement of interest for the schools. We make it sounds really bad, but we are, we have things under control and a memo that would be on top of that, I think would be very helpful to have together in our next packet. And then we don't have to go over it again. But that way, they travel together as they go through the universe. And then someday you'll give us another update.
If I could point out that in the letter, which I believe you did receive, chronically, it has images. And you'll notice that the images look nothing like the dam. It's an earthen dike. And it shows some trees, it shows some animal burrows, you know, chipmunks, woodchucks, mammals that burrow into the soil. And then it shows some minor undercutting. This was during the drought of 2016, so the water level of Puffers Pond was very low. So the pictures reveal that. But it's clear it is not the dam, it is the dike.
Mr. Zomek. Just real quick, could you use the pointer and point to where the North Beach is and where the dike is so that we're all clear?
So this is the Sharkin property. You continue, I guess that's west, west.
Northwest.
Northwest. And this is the entrance to the North Beach parking area, right up here, where I indicated there's probably a dozen or so parking spaces. The North Beach is way up here. And then along Mill Street, there are some informal parking spaces here, probably eight to ten. And then the dike is over here. The dam is right here, of course, the bridge that Mr. Mooreing was just talking about. This is one of our structures for releasing water and testing the emergency structure of the dam. And then these are the cliffs. This looks like the little dock that Mr. Sharkin has. And then the dike is right in this area, right here.
Thank you.
Hope that's helpful.
Other questions or comments for the?
Just if we could plan to have that next week's packet, I think that'd be super helpful so that we can point right at it and say, it's all okay.
Part of why the letter itself didn't go, because it couldn't get the accompanying description with it.
Be assurance.
So if there aren't other questions about the bridge, the traffic in and around the bridge and/or the dike near the bridge?
So just to reiterate, those changes aren't going to happen for the summer. We'll continue to work on it through the summer and present to you with a plan to be implemented in the fall. And then we'll have the winter to live with it and see how it works and then be ready to go.
Right. And if memory serves, we have to have a public hearing about some of it? So we'll have to notice that appropriately and all of those sort of things. So Mr. Mooreing, thank you very much. So next on our agenda is a projects update from Mr. Zomek about a variety of projects. And so if you would like to take us through those, I don't think there was a series of maps and/or pictures.
Four C.
Just the one? Oh, no, no, no. That one also goes with this group. And.
He's got pictures of all of them.
Right. They are not. I know that in our packet, I'm just double checking here, I know that there were two pieces. One had the label of four C on it, which was a single sheet of paper that's about the dog park. And the other one is this one that has the.
The high school.
The Weston and Sampson Recreation Things. So, and then on the back of that is graff. So it's got all sorts of stuff connected.
Combos.
To go right ahead.
Could proceed. Again, thank you for having me to talk about these four exciting projects. What I'd like to do is run through just a very short series of slides. I think I have one per project. I think maybe what I'll do is pause between projects if you have questions or go through all four projects. It's really, I would look to the chair on that. So starting off, the Amherst Dog Park. As you know, the Dog Park Task Force has been meeting for many months, and we looked at a number of different sites throughout Amherst. And after a thorough search of both public and private land, we landed on the old landfill. And just to orient folks, this is Belcher Town Road, Route Nine, headed toward Belcher Town. And, I'm sorry, that is over here. And then coming off Route Nine is Old Belcher Town Road here. And so this is a small corner of the old landfill. This is the landfill on the south side of Route Nine. And what we have before you is a conceptual design done by Berkshire Design Group out of Northampton. They volunteered to produce this concept design that we could submit to the Stanton Foundation. They are the group that funds both dog parks and they fund dogs and safety equipment for canines used by police departments all over Massachusetts and in other states. And so what we've put together with lots of input and lots of feedback from the task force is about a two-acre site with a large dog area and a small dog area, a central entrance and receiving area here with about twenty spaces right on the road frontage on Old Belcher Town Road. The site was selected for its access to Route Nine, the fact that it has virtually no direct or close neighbors, that it was already owned by the town and would not need to be acquired, and that we felt as though with some due diligence that we could get through the complex permitting process that putting an old, putting a dog park on a landfill would require. So as you know, we are also moving forward with the solar project on the new landfill, on the north landfill. And the remainder of this site will need to be used as mitigation for loss of habitat for a rare state-listed species. Stephanie Ciccarello and I have already met with the state folks at the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. We have walked the site with them, and they feel as though that this is a permissible use and a reasonable use given that we are setting aside the remainder of the old landfill for grassland birds. So at this point, we have a budget, we have a conceptual design, and we are finalizing our grant to the Stanton Foundation, which the first grant or the first application will be for a design grant, to fully design it. And then we, in all likelihood, would then proceed for a construction grant. Stanton will fund grants up to about $225,000 for construction. And as you all recall, town meeting, annual town meeting did authorize $90,000 in CPA funds to be used in part for construction, but in part for the due diligence. We would need to survey out this lot. We would also need to do work with the DEP on a reuse study for the site to make sure, of course, that it is safe for humans and dogs to use. What we know about this site, working with Mr. Mooreing and his staff, is that it is part of the landfill, but it was the stump dump. So this area of the landfill was primarily used for organic material, and it does not contain trash. The trash is actually in farther to the west, up in another cell. So that's where we are. We hope to be hearing from the Stanton Foundation. They usually let people know within about thirty to forty-five days. And we hope to get a design grant and be designing this park to bid out in the fall. It will take some coordination with the Natural Heritage Program because there will be a number of permits that will be part of the solar landfill. So we're trying to bring these two projects together. So I think I'll stop there.
So the question I have is relative to the, you know, establishment of that, of the dog park. Do you have a sense of, at this point, and I think it'd just be a back of the envelope sort of guess, as to what the year-over-year maintenance would be, the sort of staffing that's necessary to, you know, kind of cruise through empty trash, check on, you know, the water supplies that are there, working properly, making sure the fencing is in good order again? Because, you know, if things get used and get used a lot, then there's maintenance that needs to happen, sort of what the estimates are for sort of year-over-year maintenance would be like and how we intend to fund that.
Well, a couple of quick things. One is we're trying to build a park that is, that has as minimal annual maintenance as possible. We will have water on site. That was another reason that this site was selected, because it does have on-street water. We would bring basically one spigot. There aren't a lot of moving parts other than the water. Uh, there aren't a lot of moving parts, other than the water and the gates to a dog park. Um, most of the, uh, features of the dog park are rather passive. Uh, it is a grassed-in area. There, you'll see some of the sand mounds, again, very low maintenance, very low cost. There will be walkways around both. It does need to be ADA and there will, one of the challenges will be shade. Uh, the, the other challenge will be, um, how do we put in the fence around this, uh, given that we don't want to pierce the landfill cap? So in order to do that, one of the costs is going to be bringing up with fill, uh, the parts of the, the site that need to be brought up so that fence posts can go in the ground. Um, the task force is still working on cost estimates for an annual budget. They have been reaching out extensively to other, uh, dog parks, uh, around the state and around the valley. Um, Berkshire Design has designed a number of these. Uh, what they're planning to do is have a friends of the Amherst Dog Park. And so they have developed a draft, um, rules and regulations for the park. And they are beginning to work on, uh, setting up a structure for fundraising. So their goal will be to have annual fundraisers to raise money for, uh, any materials that are needed, for instance, uh, dog poop bags, et cetera. And then, um, again, we're trying to minimize the impact on, say, a DPW for the maintenance of this. But I will say, they haven't developed all of the annual maintenance cost at this point. But you're really talking about mowing, uh, dog waste bags, um, and then, you know, wear and tear on, on any other moving parts. There aren't a lot of moving parts here.
So just relative to our earlier conversation, those twenty spots might have meters on them? Not to suggest that at this point, but talking about, you know, sort of use of the park, uh, you know, and it could be a, a source of revenue to help offset the, you know, the cost.
A donation box.
Right, or a donation box or whatever.
Yeah, I think there'll definitely be a donation box, an annual, annual fundraising campaign.
Right, Mr. Cooper.
I mean, if there is a way that there's a appropriate revenue stream, because otherwise all taxpayers are underwriting the dog park, um, which, without, you know, if there's a way to generate some revenue that goes towards this. But I always wondered, just in that kind of creative idea department, um, the parking, I wonder if there's a way to put in the solar canopies like UMass has, if there's any grant money or a, a lease for generating electricity that pays for, um, it seems like since there's a sustainability element here and I'm, I'm seeing an opportunity to at least explore cost-wise and construction feasibility-wise, the, uh, solar canopy.
Yeah, we can look at that as a source of generating funds.
Yeah, I mean, I know, know nothing about the finances of that, but we may not be being a very...
Any other questions there?
Mr. Cooper.
Um, it totally has popped into my head, so I don't expect anybody to have an answer, but in terms of when we move forward, talking with people about how we're paying for things, I think we do need to be sensitive to the trash removal, which we are not always great at, when it comes right down to it. And it's, it's sort of off by itself and we like to imagine that the people are going to go there, at least going to take really good care of it at the beginning. But that doesn't mean that other people won't go there and dump trash there, because other people go every place and dump trash, including right downtown. So, um, we, respecting the fact that we're trying to design it the best we can to prevent that, we're still gonna have to send people out to collect trash that isn't currently being collected and other parts of town are having, are struggling to have all their trash collected. So we'll have to think about that. And then in terms of the part that's, that's an ongoing issue, the part that's more popped into my head is we have very low costs for our dog licenses. And has any community tied a surcharge on it? I mean, there are always rules about what you're allowed to charge for things, does it cost? And obviously, we would like some of it to go toward the animal welfare officers' work, which is a ton of work in addition to physically doing things. Um, but I don't know if there is any wiggle room there associated with that, that other places have been able to be creative for. Because while not everyone uses everything in town all the time, that's already true for Puffers Pond and Mill River and everything else, if we could kind of show that dog owners are doing a thing, that might also be more interesting to people. And given that the license fee is so incredibly low...
I haven't looked at it in a long time.
For animals that have been neutered, it's like five dollars. It's like a ludicrously small amount of money, which is good because then people actually license their dogs. Obviously, that's why we do it. We don't charge a lot so that we actually know that dogs are licensed and they've had their shots. But there might be a place to talk about it. And probably someone else was...
It's like time to review it.
Right. Other questions regarding the dog park? If not, if you...
Thank you. I, I made a few notes, um, on the dog waste issue. I do appreciate those comments because right now, I think historically between the PD and, and Conservation, we've funded the dog waste bags. And it is, uh, not, um, trivial what we spend on those bags per year. Now, some, uh, I know Cambridge, uh, a couple of other communities have actually, um, invested in there, maybe some grant funding for composters, so for dog waste composters. Um, I did have a conversation with, um, Mr. Snow over the weekend. I think we were at Mill River, I can't remember where we were. But he and I are really big advocates of, um, carry-in, carry-out. The minute you put a trash, a, just a broad catch-all trash can...
Everybody trash.
Everybody, Mount Pollock's, we do not put out trash cans for that reason. Um, we have to do it at Puffers, but you're right, it's not a insignificant amount of time or energy or money to get rid of that waste. So anyway, we will work with that. Um, Mr. Pistreng and, and the task force are very committed to this. One of the highest energy committees I've ever, or groups I've ever worked with in my time in Amherst. So they want to get this done. Moving along, another, um, exciting project and one with a lot of energy around it are the improvements to Graff Park. And what you see before you is, uh, the latest, um, concept that we are working through. Now, keep in mind, we have put together a team of staff composed of DPW, planning and LSSE staff, as well as two LSSE commission members to work with. Again, Berkshire Design, Mike Liu is the designer of the improvements at Graff Park. These include, uh, and, and the drawing before you shows, um, playground improvements, um, in the area where there is currently a playground, and then, um, a spray park, as well as a new pavilion, walkways, and some improvements to the, um, to the, to the, uh, parking area and a new pavilion at the lower level. Now, you recall recently, we did get a, uh, land and water conservation grant, uh, from the federal government through the state government, and, and I think this is going to come in very handy because what we're proposing there, um, have, have some, some significant costs. Um, I will say that what the group is focused on are really making a welcoming, uh, fully-accessible, um, destination for people, uh, from Amherst. Throughout, it'll probably be a, a bit of a regional draw. These, these parks will be open to anybody without a fee. Um, they will be open longer periods, if you will, uh, in the season than I, than a pool would. They will, this park will not require a staff member to be there, um, but we think we've got a, a, a pretty exciting concept. Um, the group, uh, has met multiple times with members of the public. We did a, we've done two forums at Crocker Farm School. LSSE staff went to some of the apartment complexes off of East Hadley Road and vetted some of the concepts with, with folks there, got a really warm reception, very exciting. We think this park concept goes very nicely with the CDBG work that we're gonna do on, uh, East Hadley Road, expanding the sidewalk there and making some safety improvements there. Those, I'm not gonna talk about those tonight, but that project is, uh, under design, uh, and will be bid out later this summer. In terms of things I'd like to point out to you, um, we, we really, as I said, want to make this welcoming. So, um, we're, we're doing a lot to make the, the approach and the entrance to this park, of course, it will be ADA. It will have, uh, nice kiosks, nice benches. Uh, we have not decided on the actual features of either the, the playground area or the spray park yet. That's, uh, something that our group, including LSSE members, will be talking about with Mike in the, in the coming, um, days and weeks. Our hope is to have this bid out in Ju-, uh, late June, early July. Um, some of the features I just wanted to bring to your attention. One is this fun little feature here, which is gonna be about a twenty, twenty-four-foot-long slide, uh, down the hill. These are very, um, a number of, uh, parents and a number of, uh, uh, our team have, have, uh, uh, experienced these at different parks. And it'll be built into the hillside here. We're gonna use the topography to really help us. There's also a seating wall, as well as many benches, shade structures. We're adding shade structures. If you're familiar with, um, the, the comfort station at Graff Park, there's a, a hardscaped area here that really has nothing there, and it never has. It was designed to be activated. We're gonna activate that space with shade structures and seasonal tables and chairs. So parents can be here, they might be watching a softball game or an ultimate game or a football game over on these fields, because of course, this entire area is all fielded, uh, section of Graff Park. There'll be a knee wall, a sitting wall, all along this side of the park, as well as benches, here, 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 shade structures. This area is going to be designed kind of like a stream. One of the themes we're, we're, we're working with here is to kind of have it be as natural as possible. We want the colors to be, to be subtle. Uh, this is not gonna be a, uh, primary colors, uh, kind of urban feel, um, uh, uh, spray park. We heard that loud and clear, uh, during some of the public sessions. Um, we're talking about features that are durable. We've gotten a lot of feedback from other communities, particularly on the spray park side of things, to pick features that are durable. Um, stones, artificial or real, that have, uh, water spouts coming out of them. Try to minimize the number of really complex features because those break and have problems. And when they go down, a lot of the experience is lost. This area will actually have a, a, a water feature in it where water will pool, but not, not deep, not deep enough to require lifeguarding. And then go down this stream. So kids will be able to kind of sit in the stream, play in the stream, dam up the stream with their bodies if they want, uh, do some real playing here. So it won't just be a hardscape, uh, structure. Uh, all of this will be painted concrete. We're also looking, uh, of course, at the most sustainable, uh, design, including a recycling, recirculating system for water. There's either drain-away or, uh, recirculating. Uh, our, our team is firmly on the camp, of course, of using a recirculating system. It's higher cost, uh, from the start, um, but then, uh, you reduce the water costs over time, uh, over the season. So that's where we are with the spray park. Our goal is to be under construction mid-September. We have, uh, this will come before the Conservation Commission in the next four to five weeks, uh, because some of the park is in the riverfront area, but we don't anticipate that being a major hurdle for us. There'll be some, uh, review by, uh, the Design Review Board. Again, we're not anticipating, uh, we'll be open to their, to their input, but we're not anticipating, um, any, uh, real roadblocks there.
Um, I'm wondering if, uh, along your travels with this plan, if the, um, Disability Access Advisory Committee has seen it yet? And I know that this is gonna be accessible, I know there's a lot of sensitivity from numbers on that, um, but, and you haven't picked the structures and the play equipment yet, but, um, it was just sort of underscored for me more recently when I went to the town fair, walking around with my granddaughter, and there was a young boy in a wheelchair. And he got to be pushed around, but he could only look at everybody on every ride, because there was, wasn't one ride...
Thank you.
That you could be in your, he had to be in his chair the whole time, that you could strap a chair on and participate.
Thank you for bringing that up. Um, not only are we designing a park that will be accessible, but we are going to select both features of the playground, as well as the spray park, that can accommodate, uh, young people with, uh, disabilities with a wheelchair. Uh, and our team has been looking at different examples. There's actually swings, um, that can accommodate a wheelchair, um, and we will have, uh, features in each of these that accommodate, uh, those, those young people who, who may need that, uh, that kind of, uh, uh, equipment.
I would, I would jump in on that. At, at one of the, uh, public sessions, a parent who had a child in a wheelchair was there and noted that some of the images that they had on their boards showed the wheelchair child watching and not participating. But there were other images where that child was in the, in the splash park and they, and it was just an aha moment for the designer to say, "Why am I using an image that shows them watching and not participating?" And, um, and the parent was like, "That's, I wanna see, you should be showing images of children participating, not watching from the outside." And it was an aha moment for the designer to hear a parent say, just what you said, was, "We need participation, not observation."
Thank you.
So if I may follow up on that, you, you're showing a, a lower, um, either renovation or, or rebuild of a, a pavilion down at the lower part. It's in the upper part of the drawing. Um, but that's, you know, sort of, if you go down the long slide and you keep going, kind of following that along...
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the plan for accessibility to that? 'Cause that's a pretty steep hill, which is great for the slide, but I just didn't know if there's any way to create a path or is there any concepts around walking paths that lead to that, that sort of take a more gentle slope that can get you there or not? And it may not be really very possible at all, but I'm just sort of curious.
It's, was never envisioned in this project, um, primarily because of budget. Uh, it would absolutely, to create a switchback path going all the way down there. We are putting in, of course, a upper pavilion that will be one hundred percent accessible, uh, to any users, but this is a very, very significant, um, uh, cost to, to actually do that. And in fact, uh, we are, we are only able to do this because we're going to create a pavilion or replace the pavilion there on the exact pad. This is within a hundred feet or less of the, of the Fort River.
Right.
So, we are only gonna be able to simply put a new pavilion there and that's about it. I think in the future, we could certainly look at that, but that is a very significant budget number to get a path all the way down. You can see the topo lines here to get all the way down there.
Right.
Yeah.
So what, what I was thinking is more of like, if you had a walking loop, that could take a longer trajectory around to sort of ease your way down without having to do, like the switchback. I know it's, you know, it's twelve feet of run for every one foot of change in elevation, so if you have a fifteen-feet change, you've gotta have fifteen times twelve. You know, that's a hundred and something, hundred and seventy feet or whatever.
My guess is you're north of a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars to get something down there. And it's certainly something we could look at at the future to allow any users to get down and enjoy this lower level. With this phase, it was really all about this upper level. And also activating to make sure that everything here, restrooms, uh, shade structures here, pavilion here, all the equipment in the, um, in the playground and the spray park were all accessible. We will be grouping these as well, uh, by age and we will be selecting them. And I'm, of course, I'm gonna leave this to people with more expertise than I do at Berkshire Design, as well as, uh, the, the folks from LSSE. So we'll be grouping both the equipment in the, in the playground and in the spray park for ages so that, you know, uh, and there'll be consideration of where the different components are, both in the spray park and the playground, because, of course, there'll be interplay back and forth. Kids will be running back and forth. This will all be on one level. So you will likely have, uh, you know, they, they talk about five-to-eight-year-old, uh, users in, in one group and then nine through, you know, ten, eleven, uh, in different groups. So, um, that will all be accommodated for in the design, is where those features go.
Thank you. I, I do think it's critically important that DAC itself see this in addition to, we, of course, we know everybody builds and Berkshire Design always builds to ADA. But they really need to see it for exactly the reason that you mentioned. And also, what we have found in the past is when we worked really hard to redo Mill River, which now seems like forever ago, but made it much more accessible and had not literally been accessible before and then it was, except in some ways, it wasn't too apparent in a mobility device. So, particularly as you talk about the age groupings, thinking about the fact that sometimes parents are able to parent their children from a mobility device and therefore want to be able, you know, to not have them have to be way over there because the parent can't get closer. So, so taking that into not only the child is participating, but the parent is close enough that they feel like they can supervise their child from that distance. And I think that's where talking to the DAC is really useful, because if you haven't lived that experience of parenting a child out of a mobility device, I think that makes a lot... I think that makes a lot of difference for people.
I appreciate that comment. We're now at the point in the design process where we have the concept, we know the layout. We can apply to the Conservation Commission for a notice of intent or request for determination. We will be going to the DAAC, the DRB, and the Planning Board. The Planning Board is, will see this as well. So, those three committees or boards will see this, and we will get their feedback. So, I appreciate that.
Great. And just to follow up for everyone watching at home too. It's exciting that there's going to be a second pavilion. Because that's what we haven't had before at Groff. And so, the fact that it used to be that you couldn't get there from there. If you had any sort, even if you had a cane, people could not necessarily take that slope to go down to the pavilion to celebrate whatever event they wanted to celebrate very easily. And so, the fact that there will be now a second pavilion up at the top, I think, is very exciting for people. And it feels like, you know, okay, maybe I can't get down to the lower part and I can't get to the river, but at least I can do lots of things up here.
I would presume that LSSE would have a similar reservation process or something like that, or leave that up to LSSE to accommodate use of the upper pavilion. Just in terms of timeline, I wanted to give you just a quick. So, our goal here is to be under construction, you know, mid-September. We will get as much done on the site as possible before the snow flies. And we will be back at it in the spring. Our goal would be to have a ribbon cutting on or around this time in June 2019 to be open for the entire season. Of course, this fall, we wanted to get in, working with Mr. Bachman. We wanted to make sure that people could use this area for the entire summer, which they will be able to do, and then it will be fenced in late summer. But most people won't even notice the disruption because all summer long, they'll be able to use the restrooms and all the rest of the features of the existing playground.
Right. So, just to follow up on the notion of the existing comfort station that's there. Memory serves, there's sort of one side of it that has a, not a roll top, but, you know, a concessionary. And so, given that you're going to have people there on a regular basis, is that an idea, again, talking about sort of ways to generate some revenue to help maintain the facilities? You know, obviously, it's an area, we haven't talked about parking and what we might charge for parking or that sort of thing. But certainly, a concessionary, just the fact that you've got a large number of kids being very active and separate from the opportunity to potentially generate revenue that help offset costs, but just the idea of having something for people to eat because there's not food nearby. Whereas, you know, other areas that we have do have that as an option. And there's really not any, you know, sort of food opportunities near Groff Park, unless you bring your own, which is fine too. But I was just curious if those conversations have happened yet or at all, or what thoughts have happened around that?
It's certainly been brought up in some of our meetings. It was designed to have a concession there. I would leave those discussions, I'm sure Mr. Bachman and I, working with our bills, would have those conversations. I will say that at this point, there is a certain sport that requires helmets that takes up most of that space in that concession stand. So, football is, all the football equipment is currently stored in that space. So, we'd have to find another location. I don't know. So, anyway.
Two things. Maybe food trucks are the new concession stand.
Yes.
There may be an opportunity to, if it's financially feasible to have concessions, there may be a way to have that there. Just that I had been to one of the sessions at Crocker Farm Schools, really well attended. And I want to appreciate you, Mr. Zomeck, and everyone who's been working on this, that you've mentioned. It's come a long way. And it wasn't that long ago that I was at that session. And I can see that a lot of the comments have been incorporated, and this has really evolved. So, I think, you know, sort of kudos to people who are spending time on this because it's come a long way. And I also really appreciate that people went to some of the apartment complexes near Groff Park. You know, it's sometimes hard to get people out for these, but it sounds like there was participation in that enriches the whole process. So, I'm really excited about seeing this, hopefully, next year for use. That's really great.
Thank you. If I could just add, I neglected to mention that we will be, as part of this, restriping the parking lot, which this doesn't really reflect. We've had some very spirited discussions about how we deal with this odd-shaped parking lot. And I wouldn't, this don't hold hard and fast to this layout. The most important thing is how do we address people coming to the park with disabilities? How and where do they park? And then everything else, we'll kind of pivot off of that. There's lots of spaces out there, but it is kind of a free-for-all. So, I know that, talking with Mr. Moore, we've talked about coming up with a new striping plan for the parking lot.
As part of the free-for-all, and referring to the lunch cart conversation earlier, I think it would be great if you were able to perhaps talk with Mr. Kravitz right now. We have, we don't have anything really licensed. But in speaking with him and Mr. Mora in regards to, you know, the ranges of things that they tend to take up. Because we can guarantee that ice cream trucks are going to show up anyway. And the ding-dong truck, or however we call it these days. And so, planning for it in terms of, I mean, obviously, the important stuff is the handicap accessibility. But going ahead and planning for, if we wanted it to be somewhere, where would we want it to be? Given the fields and given the other things. Rather than saying, ah, shucks, I wish we'd thought of this before. So.
I think that's a great comment. And I'm very much in favor of kind of looking to the private sector on that. I think we've designed some spaces. We sell some things at Mill River Pool, but it's not something we often do extremely well. And, you know, I think having food trucks there, be permitted to be there. Both at Groff, Mill, other parks is a direction we should look at. So, happy to do that. Support Mr. Kravitz and Ms. Bills. So, other questions before I move on?
Go ahead.
So, moving along to a project that we are working on with designers Weston and Sampson out of Boston and Worcester. This is, you may recall, a project that the Recreation Working Group has been focused on for about the past year. And we're excited to bring forth a couple of different concepts that we have been vetting publicly. We, again, we think we've done quite a good job at having public meetings where 30 to 40 people, I think we've had two in this room. And we'll have a couple of more before we're done. But the goal of the project that the Rec Working Group got CPA funding for, and then matched that funding with school funding, was to do a conceptual master plan for community field, the Emerson High School fields, and the middle school fields, as well as at least incorporating Wildwood Fields, knowing full well that that site, you know, has been the focus of a number of studies, if you will, over the last couple of years. But we're excited to have three different concepts. And I won't have the time tonight to go into great detail on these, but suffice it to say that we've gotten a lot of input. The athletic director, the finance director for the schools. Mr. Slaughter, I think, has been at every meeting. We've had student athletes at our meeting. We've had coaches, both private and coaches in the public schools. And the goal is really to look at this area for the public watching us at home, which is community field, which is town-owned land here. And then the high school fields here. And I think tonight, I'll really just focus on those because we can get into sub-conversations about the middle school and Wildwood and the other piece of property we own over there. But I think the major focus here. And so, again, Weston and Sampson has come out. They've done a full assessment of all the fields. They've looked at the condition of the fields and facilities, the War Memorial Pool, the track. They've looked at ADA. They've looked at parking. They've looked at egress access. And they've come up with three different designs, which I'll just quickly go through for you and highlight some of the major features. So, option one, and again, I'm going to be kind of brief here because we've had hours and hours of meetings on this. Option one, the major feature of this is that it realigns the track. The track is now currently aligned east-west. This proposes to realign the field north-south, which is a more accepted alignment in New England, given sun. It prioritizes the track because, as many of us know from being at many public meetings and town meeting, the track is in very poor condition and needs to be replaced. And our goal here is not to replace it on-site in the east-west configuration and spend probably north of half a million dollars on something that probably should go in a different direction. It moves the softball field, which is currently here, closer to the high school, over to this corner. Again, in a more natural and more conducive layout, given the sun. And it creates a practice field adjacent to a main field in the middle of the track. Now, Weston and Sampson was, with all the input that they received, they were given a number of different directives. Look at ADA, look at the current condition of the resources and facilities we have. Try to maximize playing field square footage. Of course, give equal billing to both sports for men and women. And if there are any inequities there, to correct those. It was to really look at things like, a great example is even the baseball field here is currently not accessible. The softball field in its current location has no walkways. You're simply on grass. There are steep slopes. There's muddy areas. They looked at all of those. So, finally, you'll notice that near the War Memorial Pool, Weston and Sampson suggest a small spray park associated with the pool, as well as walking paths throughout the entire configuration, both north of Mattoon Street and south, which would actually connect all the way over to the middle school. In other words, we could create, through those walking paths, an exercise trail for people to walk with strollers, to run, in addition to a new track. Now, I will say, one of the assumptions that we gave to Weston and Sampson was that the DPW Parks and Trees and Parks building would be leaving. So, they did program this space. They incorporated some exercise stations here in and among two new basketball courts, the spray park and the War Memorial Pool. We also want them to, on the south side of War Memorial Pool, to incorporate a more significant War Memorial structure there. As we all know, that War Memorial, built in the 1950s, is a flagpole, a small circle of flowers and a stone. But we think there's an opportunity to achieve something better and more lasting and more representative of the respect that we have for all of our veterans who served and died in various conflicts. So, that is concept one. Concept two, I won't go into great detail, but you can see, if you looked at this at all over the weekend, it has the track, again oriented north-south, the track and inside field. But instead of close to the high school, they moved it over to the west. All of these concepts assume that our goal is multipurpose fields. What they identified is that we have designated space, for instance, the football field. The football field, to my knowledge, is not used for much else besides football throughout the year. Yet, it is using a significant amount of square footage of turf, natural turf area. This would propose, in both scenario one and two, would propose to put the football field in the middle of the track and move it from its current location near the parking area at the high school. So, that's primarily what we see. We add another practice field here, associated with the main field. And then finally, in number three, which is a little more radical, this proposes to create the multipurpose field, which would accommodate football, ultimate, lacrosse, any of the sports that require a larger field inside the track. And it would move the Zomeck Field, if you will, over closer to Triangle Street here, with practice fields in the outfield and here, and the softball field. So, you'd really have a softball and baseball complex north of Mattoon Street. Each one of these proposals, by the way, takes advantage of the natural topography to create bleacher areas that can be built into hillsides. And as we know, there are hillsides here, and here, and here. So, if we go back, we know that this area is very tight in here, near the baseball field. And then, of course, there are currently bleachers at the toe of the slope here. But bleachers could be built into those slopes, taking advantage of that topography. So, right now, I think, oops, I will end there. We have similar concepts for the middle school with modest proposals for Wildwood School, given some of the questions that we're exploring with our elementary schools. I think the hope here is that we can provide concepts and cost estimates that can inform future leaders, future finance committees, school committees, as to setting goals for the future. What are our short-term and long-term goals relative to our main central athletic facilities in town? We know that the track is going to be a driving force because it will not last many more seasons. At a point where it gets, I don't know if condemned is the right word, but if it is not approved to be used for track and field events, then we will have to come up with an alternative. So, I think the goal here is to have Weston Sampson finish their work in July, present it to the town, present it to the school committee. And then with it will come cost estimates and a phased approach that might be over the next 10 to 15 years. So, I think I'll stop there.
I'll just add a couple of small things because I have been on the Recreation Working Group. One thing to point out is that the area around the War Memorial Pool, you'll notice there's slight differences between each of the three layouts. And in some ways, those can be, I don't want to say plug and play, but you can, they sort of hit the same amount of square acreage. And so, if there are particular things that you like, like some of them have two basketball courts versus one, some put the pool house being rebuilt in its current location. In another one, it has it sort of on one side of the facility, a little larger. So, it might be a shared facility with the school and the pool, that sort of thing. So, those can kind of mix and match, as it were, amongst the options that are here. So, I just want to point that out a little bit. And there's some advantages and disadvantages in more detail that we talked about at the actual public meetings. But we'll have an ongoing and continued spirited discussion about what's the best overall approach. But anyway, so do people have questions?
Yeah, I think, just to reinforce what Mr. Zomeck said, which is, the goal is to get an overall plan that we agree on, talk about an implementation plan, and then talk about the financing. I think what is going to be a real sticker shock for people is how much all this is going to cost. It's millions of dollars. We're not talking about a few hundred thousand dollars. It's millions of dollars to do this. And that's why we won't be able to do it all at once. But we need to have a plan and an implementation schedule for how we can address it. Some things can't wait very long, like the track, which is in deplorable condition. And so, once you say, okay, we're going to put a lot of money into the track, then you want to put it where you're going to keep it. And that, and the football field sort of drives a lot of the decisions about that, where the track is going to be. But we're talking about a lot of money that need to be addressed for the fields among a lot of other capital needs that we're facing, roads, DPW, fire, schools, et cetera, et cetera.
I've spoken against incrementalism earlier. Actually, I want to reverse my position, and I think doing it, why not? In phases totally makes sense. In the one meeting I went to, it came up a little bit afterwards, conversation. And I understand they haven't done the cost estimate piece. But once the track is located and that sets the master plan for where everything else is going to go, you can do that as the first capital phase. There's a little bit of extra cost as you keep moving things around until you get to phase two or three because, you know, there's an economy doing it all in one fell swoop, but probably not realistic. It's really exciting to think about having a kind of sports complex area that both has some park-like features, the pool, public areas and playing areas that are kind of at a standard where other schools are going to want to come here for tournaments. And we can host that. And so, the track is just already unacceptable. So, getting the master plan fixed so you know what that first increment is, and then work around that over the number of years because some fields might be temporary until they go to their permanent and all of that sort of phasing and fitting the puzzle pieces together. But I think, along with some other things we've looked at tonight is But I think, along with some other things we've looked at tonight, is absolutely exciting to see us making progress on something that is so needed, and we all know how important sports are for overall development of youth and adults. I love the parking, the, the pathway loop. I spend my, some of my best exercise is walking around with friends in different places, so to be able to do that and then drop back and watch a game, or watch little kids play is just great.
Then the other, one other debate will be natural turf versus artificial turf, and the advantages and disadvantages of both, and that will be another major conversation that the community will have, because people feel very strongly on both sides.
Yeah, I'm agnostic.
One other thing, I'll comment just to that point a little bit, is one of the other requests the, the working group has made relative to Weston and Sampson is to give us some estimates of, I mean, there's, there are estimates of what natural surface fields can tolerate, you know, how much usage can they, can they take, and, and some of the work that's been done by our own staff as far as accumulating the current workloads on those fields, was to get a sense of, of what our current use is and whether or not the fields can tolerate that. There's some rest that's necessary for, for grass and, and also is what are the, the maintenance costs? In other words, to maintain a, a natural surface field or an artificial field, there's a certain amount of maintenance that has to occur, both, you know, with a natural surface, it's, you know, reseeding and, you know, perhaps watering, fertilizing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What are those costs and, you know, both labor and materials, and also the same thing with, with any artificial surface, there is maintenance and, and work that needs to be done on those kinds of things. What do those kind of numbers look like? So that not only are we planning for the capital project, but also we're being able to start to prepare our operating budgets to handle that workload, to maintain this space and have it last for us over the years.
Thank you for putting that so nicely, so I didn't have to put it quite as bluntly as I normally do, but I'll go ahead and do it bluntly anyway. We work really hard not to offend each other here at this meeting, because everyone's working super hard. We have short shrifted our maintenance budget and our operating budgets for a very long time, decades upon decades, and one of the reasons that the track is in such abominable condition is because we didn't figure out a way to program to do better with it, even though of course, over time, it would deteriorate some, et cetera. And so I really appreciate that you keep bringing that up, Mr. Slaughter, because we really need to start doing that, and we haven't been doing it, because we have so many competing needs that we've pushed maintenance off a little bit, and we just can't keep doing that. So, well, we can, obviously, because we've done it. What I'm trying to get across is, I think that the values are such that we are trying hard to avoid continuing doing that, so thank you. And reminding people, of course, that artificial turf, for those who aren't in the world that you guys are in, is not just, oh, you lay it down and it's all done, and it's a whole lot different than that. When they're continuing to do the little advantages and disadvantages chart, I realize they're already down to like four-point type, but it would be incredibly helpful to me as someone who, let, let's be really clear, does not care at all about a type A or type B field, because that's not where my head's at, but cares that coaches and kids have what they need. I would like those advantages and disadvantages areas to mention the change in the pool house, and to mention the basketball court number. I mean, I know we can see them, because they're nice and blue, but to mention that as part of the advantages and disadvantages in those cases, I think is really important. It's already talking about storage, and that's really important to some people, but that's not important to people who are walking around there, using it. And so going ahead and including some of those, like, user-friendly type statistics, I think is really helpful, particularly with the change in the pool house, just in terms of understanding what that would mean. And then along those lines, because so many people are familiar with every detail of how every field is currently laid out, but I will happily admit that I am not able to tell apart which kind of field is which kind of field, I think it's incredibly important to have a drawing like this in the packet, as you continue to go around, that shows what's there right now.
Yes.
And I know you have that, and I know you've used it in different places, but having it again here to remind us, wow, we'd have so much more stuff, is, is incredibly helpful, I think, to remind us of that, that that's why it costs so much money, because we're trying to meet a whole lot of different needs by doing this. But to show, again, what the current conditions are, I think, would be really valuable as this packet continues its way around the world.
I, I appreciate that we have many of those images already. In fact, we have, we asked for that very definition of type A field, type B size, because it's very hard to tell them all apart. How big is an ultimate field, lacrosse? They all play on different sized fields, so we have all of that. And what's exciting is, in this report, all of that will be compiled for us. Mr. Slaughter and I didn't even talk about, in that report also will be usage data. We've never had this in the time I've worked for the town. We've never known how many teams, how many individuals, how many games are played on this field, that field, or that field. Thanks to LSSC, Planning, DPW, everybody's come together and gotten that data. It'll be included in this report for future planning. But it's, it can be a little startling to see how many games are on these fields, and Mr. Slaughter talked about resting. For some of them, there isn't a lot of rest. So we will have all of that in that one report.
The other thing I'll mention is that these images were actually at the, at the public meetings on two-foot by three-foot poster boards, so the, the advantages and disadvantages were a much more reasonable font size when they were blown up.
Well, then you have room for more of them.
That's right. So.
Just to follow up on that, I, having been at one of the presentations, I appreciate your comment, Ms. Brewer, but this is almost like the thumbnail of the executive summary of what was a full, a full evening, and there was a lot of information, and another takeaway I got is about the, the field resting. Some of the fields are so wet, so, so much of the year, that while they, you could see them in the aerial view, not, not just here, but the other fields that we use, like at Fort River, that it overtaxes the ones that are more usable when they're needed. So the distribution of use really varies on the weather conditions in a given season, and so that's also stressing some of the fields.
I will say that Mr. Bockelman knows my enthusiasm for these projects, and he did give me some guidance as to how long I could speak on these, so I'm trying to keep it. We have many more slides, but I know you have a full agenda.
Well, like I said, if there's a chart that has advantages and disadvantages, it could include the number of basketball courts in the chart.
Yes.
Although I realize there's a lot more words in the full report. I didn't know there was a lot more pictures.
And all of these projects are on the planning website and have much more extensive images, and when the public meetings have been, and even minutes and notes taken at most of the public meetings. I will finish with a project that is probably, it's, it's coming a little behind the other projects, simply because we kicked it off just a few weeks ago, but you all know the, the North Common and the Main Street parking lot. We are using a combination of CPA funds and transportation fund dollars to fund the design and construction of improvements to both of these facilities. We had the first public meeting, I was actually not able to go. I know Mr. Bockelman went, and perhaps some of you were there as well. It was attended by forty-five people or so. We, prior to that, in, in previous years, have had public meetings, so there's been quite a bit of lead-up to this. It's kind of been a plane on the tarmac waiting to take off. I will say that, you know, again, the goal now, for those out in the public, the goal now, although we started looking at the design or redesign of the North Common, we've now incorporated the design of this entire area between Spring, Spring Street, Boltwood, South Pleasant, and Main Street, including the parking lot directly out in front of the Town Hall, which is right there. This is a, just a concept that Paul DeThier put together for one of the grants that we submitted. I just had it here because it was one of the few images. There's one more showing what Paul DeThier, who's one of our, part of our engineering staff, put together. So the focus here is to redesign and improve the North Common, and redesign and improve the parking area out in front of the Town Hall, all as one project. We're looking, obviously, at things broadly, ADA, the need for parking, the need for lighting, access to the common, across the common. We're looking at erosion issues on the common. We are acknowledging the common, the North Common, as part of the historic fabric of our downtown, also acknowledging the fact that it is in such a central location here. It is really at the heart of our downtown, and how can we make improvements to make it more aesthetically pleasing, more functional? Could there be sitting areas? Could there be plazas where people could gather? Could there be seasonal tables? All of these things have come up in the public forums that we've had. Again, Weston and Sampson is working with us. It's a team of DPW Planning, LSSC is at the table, the Historical Commission and LSSC are really, commissions are taking the lead in this as hosts of the public meetings. So all of that is being kind of fed to Weston and Sampson. Again, we, we decided a few months back to take our time with this. It's so important that we will be taking the summer and part of the early fall to really come up with designs for the North Common, the parking area. We hope to bring those back to you in September, early October. The goal here would be to bid the, the, the project out in the winter to be under construction after the graduations at Amherst Hampshire and UMass in the spring of nineteen. We have about a million dollars, that's both for design and build. That's not a lot of money, so we are going to have to do the very best with, with that budget. Again, lighting, electrical, walkways, how do we accommodate all of these things? We'd like to see in the North Common and the, and the parking there. So I'll stop and...
So I'll go ahead and be the difficult one, and not that I ever am on any other circumstance. So here are my notes, aren't they pretty, from the night of, of May twenty-ninth, and I appreciate that other bodies are still working on this, that this is not done and prepared for us at this point. We don't even put that in the packet, because there's still a lot to go. I would, however, object to the media coverage that indicated that maybe Weston and Sampson should go ahead and take the parking lot away, because so many people, so many architects, said that at that meeting that night. And while I totally appreciate what they were trying to get at, and that heart of downtown concept came up so many times, I'd really like to rebrand it, that, that how dare we have parking in the heart of downtown? So of course, my objection immediately was that this isn't Pulaski Park being redone, which didn't have parking to begin with, and doesn't have parking now, but in fact is a huge parking lot down at Switchback, behind the front, behind it, and that in the current climate, despite global climate change, it felt like we needed to keep that parking lot. So I'm hoping that Weston and Sampson has not been encouraged to remove the parking lot, because that's going to be a problem moving forward, as far as I'm concerned, if we try and do that. I do appreciate how frustrated people are, that they wish we could do more with the site, but as you said, a million dollars is not really going to get us a whole lot. We did talk definitely about the peace gathering, you know, up there in the corner, to make sure that we took care of that, maybe improved its, you know, its levelness and, and the gathering space, so that people could sit, bench, you know, not have tripping hazards, et cetera, but that the rest of it, given the amount of money that we have at this particular moment in time, is not going to be some huge, amazing, astonishing, shiny thing in comparison to, it's just going to work a lot better, because it sounds like we're, a lot of work is being put into the paths and the way the landscaping would work, in terms of making the whole section flow better. So it will definitely be much better, but it's not like the kind of redesign we're doing out at Groff, for example. It's not that level of redesign. And as I said, I, I, I need to know now if you're planning to take out all the parking spaces, because I have a problem with that.
So parking is a concern. We are going to have fewer parking spaces, no matter what, because the parking is so narrow there, they're going to be just, when they just, when they designed parking spaces, they're wider, because cars are wider now. So there are going to be fewer parking spaces. I think it's, what people articulated at that meeting was that it was an opportunity to re-envision what that whole north area that Mr. Zomek described could be looked at. I think everybody, you know, one of the senses was, if we could do something that was different, but we preserved the majority of the parking spaces, let's look, let's see what that looks like. I mean, I think the default is like-for-like, which is we just sort of improve everything a little bit from what we have, and that's, might be the default thing that we have, but I think we want to, my goal would be to have options for the board to look at, to say, and here's another thing you could look at if you were looking more ambitiously about what could happen for this. I think that's sort of our duty, to give you some options, instead of saying, this is just like-for-like, as opposed to, and then you would also have an option saying, well, here's another creative, bold, brave concept, and here's where the parking would then go to accommodate that.
Exactly.
We would have to do this to Boltwood Avenue in order to preserve the number of spaces that we want. We don't want to lose, parking is such a precious commodity here. But I'll be honest, you know, at the, we, at the bid, the Business Improvement District discussions, that we, when we talked about parking, they were okay with losing parking in this area, despite all their other arguments about parking. They were looking at more, more eager for more hardscape areas at one point.
That's true. So I appreciate options, bold options, visionary options, and I would hope that the Downtown Parking Working Group would be included, as they have not been yet. So it's great to have a bunch of people get together for a charrette-like experience and kind of have some great ideas, but actually looking at what would be lost in parking. This is the most used lot in the town, and in the downtown, and so we don't want to be at cross purposes with other goals. It is a precious commodity, and we could look at different options, but I think to be aware that some people have been working really diligently to try to make parking work better, and again, I think the idea of, if you just reduce parking, people will ride their bikes more, is not the way to think about this. There may be a way to improve this greatly and lose five spaces, and you trade that off and say, but we picked up three more over here, and they're sort of looking at the net gain, net loss, and some creative thinking, creative thinking's always good, but I would be very reluctant to say, because a bunch of people came and were excited about other ideas, that, that means we're going to do it without a lot more public discussion about what it means to change the parking there, and sort of backing up what Ms. Brewer said. Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind, if I just follow it on that, so while I appreciate that, you know, at least one member of the bid board said that, et cetera, and that's all well and good, but just watching as time goes by, as people need to use that lot for Town Hall, that's what they use for Town Hall, that's what they use for a lot of things. And so I would def, no matter, even with this, even with redoing the striping, because, you know, our parking spaces all over town are all different sizes, when we redo that, we should be evaluating the net loss, even if it's only three, to say, where are those three going to be? And if, then if we are doing angled parking on Boltwood or some amazingly creative idea like that, we need to really understand what those options are, but I appreciate that it would be brought to us as an option. What I'm trying to avoid is saying, everybody said it'll all work out. That's not what I'm looking for as an alternative.
Right. Ms. Zomek.
So I wish I had been at that, that first meeting, but I've been to other meetings on this, on this topic. Clearly, we, we understand parking is a major concern, and we, we acknowledge that. I will say, it was the first public, in this phase, if you will, charrette on this. So I would look to Ms. Krueger in terms of how we, not at this meeting, but in a future discussion about how we liaison with the Parking Working Group. Do we need to go to them? All of these meetings are open, they broad invites have gone out. So I'd look to you to say, how do we liaison with them as we work through this? Clearly Weston and Sampson is getting direction from staff, through me, so there's, there's a balancing act, and they fully recognize that we are not going to lose, you know, all of those spaces, and, and we need to look at net numbers, so.
I think that could be arranged.
Yeah. Great.
Ms. Brewer.
That was one of the things that I appreciated that Ms. Brestrop agreed to do, actually, at the meeting, is I pointed out very directly that just saying everybody should come to the meeting is not going to be sufficient, and so you can't expect the Downtown Parking Working Group, or the Historical Commission, which had almost none, if any, members present, et cetera, to show up, because even some of them have been to the previous phases of this, and know that they'll see it again. But Ms. Brestrop agreed that the names that were collected that night, that people would be notified, not only of the next group meeting like that, but also as it went to the Historical Commission, and as it went to Leisure Services Commission, so people could show up at those meetings, even though of course, we encourage people to subscribe to meeting notices, but since those people had actually made the effort to show up and sign a sign-in sheet, not just to show that we had them here, but we can continue to notify them to please go to these other meetings, because we cannot really expect that the Select Board, the Historical Commission, Leisure Services Commission, will just be okay with what comes out of two big groups that happened to be at a certain night on a to be at a certain night on a certain day. And so, I understand, you know that, but I'm, we're telling the community, we understand that too, that people were out of town, but there are different places you can plug into this. And Ms. Brestrup mentioned there was going to be a good bit more on the website as well.
And just like the plans for Groff Park, we've actually taken those plans to two LSSE meetings specifically. These will go to all of the various committees and boards. I did also want to point out that there is a design team, not unlike Groff Park, there is a design team for this project that includes planning, DPW, LSSE, because they put in some of the funding for this through CPA, and of course, the Historical Commission. That design team has been meeting with Weston and Sampson in the lead-up to last week's meeting. So, although the two Historical Commission reps couldn't be there at the public meeting, they have been around the table with us talking about the project with Weston and Sampson. And that'll continue.
So, the point that Ms. Brestrup made was we can't have, we've contracted with Weston and Sampson for a certain number of meetings. We're not going to have Weston and Sampson come to every committee meeting, but that's why our staff members are there to go, to go between and engage as many people as possible.
And that's what we've done. As I said, at Groff Park, I was at the LSSE meeting last week with Nate Malloy and we presented the Groff Park plans.
Yeah, right. That's fine. I mean, I just totally understood.
Well, thank you very much for your input. I've taken some notes and we will come back with updates as they are appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Zomek. So, next on our agenda, unless people need a break.
A break would be good.
You know, a facility break would, for three to five minutes.
That would be lovely.
All right. Why don't we take about a five-minute recess and then we'll come back to it. Next on our agenda is special annual town meetings, wrap-up discussion. I believe we have a memo on our packet, so Mr. Buckland, do you want to take us through that a little bit and guide us through that?
Sure. So, in your packet is just the sort of, what I did last year, which is the, all the items that we addressed at the annual town meeting and what is to happen or what has already happened, so we can start to track that and keep you updated on where everything is going or what has to come forward. The sort of substantive discussions are the three additional funding sources, funding requests, sixty thousand dollars for community services, fifty-three thousand dollars to the transportation fund, and fifteen thousand dollars to the school department. And those will be things that we'll be working on and having conversations with you about. The rest of it is pretty, you know, things that we just have to do, like the easements, when they're ready, they'll come before you. There's some, the other stuff that the town clerk has done, she's done, I think she's done pretty much all the things that she's supposed to do in terms of the resolutions, in terms of the bylaw, the playing, the zoning bylaws the planning board has to take action on, and then clerk sends it in to the Attorney General for review. And so, that's just an update for you. Questions?
Mr. Steinberg. Yeah, just real quickly on, back to the Article Nine additional funding things. I guess the only thing that I would hope the thought will be given to is if this, any of these would be the creation of new programs that would require multi-year funding to maintain them, that then consideration be given as to whether the transition provisions of the charter would indicate that before making a commitment to a new multi-year commitment to the town, whether we should be waiting for input from the new council.
So, maybe that's the first discussion on all, each one of these things is to have that, put that on the agenda for the board to start to have that, what does this mean for, is it a recurring, is it going to require additional appropriation going forward or not? And maybe something that you would say, this should actually be left to the council to decide.
I'll follow up. When the amendment came up for the sixty thousand in community services, I gathered from what I heard from some town meeting members is they had an expectation last year when there was an additional appropriation that that meant it would be repeating. And they were, you know, projecting this is what I think people were saying, they were kind of surprised or shocked that it hadn't just been added as more community service funding. And I'd never understood that prior extra appropriation as that. So, I think we need to be really clear in how we understand that vote. And it is subject to our own interpretation, but I think there was different expectations for sure about the year prior when money was added to community services and whatever we do decide to speak, make a clear statement about that.
Brewer?
Yeah, I think it is about managing expectations. And we did have, we did have a dedicated time during a meeting where we talked about community services funding. We got very little turnout for that except from individual agencies who were hoping for additional funding, which was not really what we were looking for so much as a conversation with the community because we knew we'd be facing this discussion. I also am fairly confident that if we'd added in sixty thousand, there still would have been an additional forty thousand projected, suggested by someone at that point, and maybe it wouldn't have been added and maybe it wouldn't have. But there's an underlying values question here that we tried to address at that special section of our meeting in the fall that perhaps didn't really have the effect that we were looking for. And obviously, the reason we didn't just throw it in there is because that's not how we do our budget process. We have all the various iterations over time as to how much money we can put into things. And certainly, I am confident that staff did consider that and wondered, hmm, I wonder if I'll be able to do that, and then saw what our budget looked like and realized there was no way that that was considered the appropriate thing. Now, of course, there are town meeting members who think, given the amount of money that we have, quote, "left over" at the end of the year, that of course, we can accommodate that. But that is a different budget philosophy perhaps than what we have been following. So, I, and I want to just compliment the town manager again for doing this because this is not something that ever existed in the public venue in previous years and previous town managers. So, thank you because it's really great to be reminded of, oh, right, there were all these things that we said we were going to follow up and do. And we know, we know that things like, of course, the town clerk sent things where she needed to send them. We don't have that problem like some other communities that never sent their bylaw changes in to, we know that that didn't happen, but still, to have it all here in front of us and to be clear on, you know, to be scheduled as what. I mean, one of the things, not, I'm not trying to nitpick, but they are slightly different kinds of things. Like amending the zoning map is just something to go into the long parking lot, so to speak, of things that the planning board's going to look at. Because that's not something that's necessarily of immediate, you know, in terms of the planning board's other priorities. Whereas the easements, as we get them ready, we're going to get them done. You know, we're not putting those off for months. And so, understanding better the categorization of things, I think, as Mr. Steinberg pointed out, which things are just things we get over with, like, you know, Kingman Road easement but, and others which are longer-term discussions would be really valuable. But thank you for this chart. It's really helpful.
If there's not anything else on that, then we'll move on to charter transition update. Is the next item on the agenda? Yes.
And it's already late, and so I just want to be clear. When we normally have a discussion about annual town meeting, since this never existed before as town manager, we also talked about town meeting in general and improvements and communication, et cetera. Were we planning, we don't have to do it now, we don't have to do it tonight, but were we planning to do that at some point? Because we do normally try and do that. And if we want to, you know, just do it later tonight, depending on how late it gets, that'd be fine with me. But I'm just trying to understand what our plan was.
Mr. Steinberg?
I guess I would have to say, since the voters have passed a new charter and this was the last annual town meeting, that this, that may not be a good use of our time.
That'd be true, but we should at least see if we have things that came out of that to discuss, such as what we just did with the community services. So, it's our chance and it, I understood wrap-up discussion to be anything that we thought was valuable coming out of town meeting. Obviously, some of the process things are moot, I think. But there may be other observations or lingering confusions or questions.
Right.
Would be a chance to talk about that.
Forgive me for sort of wanting to move ahead there, but I'm certainly happy to have that conversation now if we want to, or we can have it later this evening after some other things are, so I'm open either way.
That's what I recommend, is that we go ahead and get other stuff done and then see if we have time tonight.
All right. That's perfectly fine with me.
The further we get date-wise from when the events happen.
It just gets harder, yeah.
The foggier it becomes, that's all.
Okay. So, I think next, and this is an ongoing sort of agenda item, which will be there probably throughout the rest of our agendas, is the charter transition update and whether there's any additional sort of information relative to that. And so, did you want to?
So, yes. Last Wednesday, there was a public hearing at the, in front of the Joint Committee on Election Law at the State House on the action that was incorporated into the charter and then voted and approved by the town meeting. And Mr. Steinberg led the testimony for the town. He should, maybe he wants to update on that.
I, I think you, your memorandum, which included the testimony of the people who presented it, our request, except for town council, who are really responding to questions and comments of other witnesses, really pretty much speaks for itself. The committee, I believe, understood the request and has it under advisement. And we, hopefully, will be hearing soon. And hopefully, we will be hearing a recommendation for our bill favorably recommending it to the House and Senate, and we will be able to get it moved in an expeditious fashion so that it can be enacted before the end of the legislative session.
I do want to mention that there were residents from the town of Amherst who testified against it. And the Senator and the Vice Chair from the House side had some pointed questions for their, addressing their concerns. So, I think, we don't know what they will decide, but they will decide at some point. I think they understand certainly the, that we were presenting the vision, that the options that were delivered, that were voted on by the people at the electoral, at the ballot box and by the town meeting. One member, the Vice Chair, said, "We're supposed to carry out the wishes of the town meeting of the town, aren't we?" And according to the law, because it's a home rule. And that was sort of his sort of summary of the process. So, it's really compelling testimony and so I think that that will, and I think they do understand the need for speed in essence on this.
Thank Mr. Bucklman and Mr. Steinberg and the other members of the town team who went to the joint hearing. It sounds like you folks, and I know from the written materials, really prepared well and did an excellent job representing the town's point of view that the election dates should follow the state dates of September fourth for the primary and November sixth, I believe, for the general. I feel very strongly that that's the preferred action and that we're carrying out the will of the town. So, certainly citizens have the right to go and speak at a hearing. But I am very much looking forward to hearing that the town has prevailed in this issue and I, we find out soon, but thank you for doing that. It was actually a lot of extra work.
So, and other items under the charter transition, one is there's a memo from the town attorney titled Relationship Between Petition for Special Town Meeting and Charter, which addresses, gives you some guidelines if a special town meeting petition is delivered to you. In essence, what it says is that the charter has the power of state law. And when state law has, and this is more specific to the town, so any state law that's in conflict, this will prevail over the state law. And I think that was one of the questions you were struggling with. If you were presented with a petition to call a special town meeting, how would you handle it? And I think there's a pretty comprehensive opinion from the town attorney that addresses And then the second item was a interpretation of what it, of what would happen, and this is another email opinion from town count, from the town attorney. If someone were to take out papers for two different positions, i.e. the counselor-at-large and the district counselor, what would happen if that person, can that person run for both seats? And the answer is that the person can't run for two seats. The person has to choose one or the other and provided some guidance to the town clerk as the town clerk interacted with the candidates as they're taking out their papers and returning their papers.
So, I have a follow-up question on that since I had asked that we get that, in addition to the clerk asking, I had asked that we get that in some level of detail because I knew that some people might wish to turn in two sets of papers and see if they got enough signatures on both to help influence their decision as to which one to vote for. Because obviously, when you're running for district, you can only take signatures from your district. And maybe that's the place, as people learn how this works, that you get more additional signatures because you have a much smaller pool of people that you're choosing from. Because I think it's important that we understand and that the community understand this advice from the standpoint that, it has been my understanding up until this point, that based on what KP Law has said, that we are not going to be in the position of refusing to issue two sets of papers. We are not going to be in the position of refusing to accept two sets of papers. But what we are going to say is do this at your own risk if you do that, because you do end up in a situation where if you don't withdraw one of the sets of certified signatures, you won't be on the ballot for anything. And so, I think it's important that people understand that it's not that the town clerk is making a decision for them, it's that they're having to give them all this advice so that they understand that it's up to them to get it right and that the town clerk can't help you if you don't follow all the rules. And so, if you don't get it in by the deadline in terms of the certified withdrawal, you won't be on the ballot at all. So, if it's not clear enough, maybe you don't want to do that. Legally, you can because you are taking a risk on messing up at some point in the process. But I think it was really helpful to have all of that clarified in terms of all those levels of details because some people had worried that maybe they shouldn't be allowed to pull both sets of papers even to begin with. And so, clarifying all that, I think, was really important. And it's just something we've not had to deal with before because one did not pull two sets of papers, say, for example, for two different town meeting seats, like a one-year seat and a three-year seat, because you only needed one signature. So, it was a very different circumstance. Thank you for getting all that from KP Law.
So, was there any, anything else?
There's nothing else, no.
I don't think there was either as far as the transition. So, the next item on the agenda, the Town Manager Performance Evaluation Goal Setting Review Timeline. I think really the purpose of having this on here for myself, you know, there's wishful thinking on what I would do relative to last year's timeline of things and having that updated for tonight, which it didn't happen. But the piece that it serves for us is that if you know your summer plans of when you will not be available, if those are coming together for you, if you would be so kind as to share those with me so that I might shape our, our planning for our performance evaluation. We do, we will need to have a little bit more conversation about that evaluation because I think, you know, given the transition, it is going to be a slightly different process we go through as far as necessarily that we'll not evaluate the goals that we set for the manager, but how we frame our responses may be a little different given that the Select Board is going away and a council is coming in, and so it may change how we want to do it, it may not. But, you know, the conversation. But I think the two real key points is it's coming. And if you could share with me any known vacation or other plans that prevent you from attending any currently scheduled meetings. I know mine are starting to come together for the summer, but not fully in place. But it may require us, if I get feedback from people, we may want to change some dates or we may want to sort of shape our timeline relative to when people can be in town or are in town, so.
I just suggest maybe you send us a follow-up to tonight. I mean, it's our responsibility, but like a reminder, like, hey, send me your dates by next whatever. And then we see that email and we're like, oh, yeah. And, you know, going through and then send you, what we do know so far.
Right.
I think we're all probably... I think we're all probably not totally settled on what we're doing, but we know some of it, but if you wouldn't mind in a couple days or soon, doing that electronically, so it's something like we can reply back to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think a couple of meetings ago at a pre-town meeting session, we did get last time's calendar in terms of how the process worked, and so if we are sticking with the same process, which obviously we haven't discussed yet, as you just indicated, but, you know, on the one hand, maybe not bothering to change now might also not be a bad idea, is those dates are coming right up in terms of if we, if, and I think we're in a different position now than if we knew this was a continuing process.
Right.
I think we might argue more about, discuss amongst ourselves in a very helpful way about how we might ask for staff input, because we've struggled with some, with the forms and the format, et cetera, of those in the past. But if we're going to just go ahead and say, hey, one last time, we'll do it the same way, it's fairly quickly that that starts happening and then is over, and those deadlines are usually in the beginning of July for staff to get that information back. So if anybody has a big thought about changing it now, I think you should express that to Mr. Slaughter now, rather than two weeks from now, because that, that, that's going to just start having to roll out.
Right. So it's entirely likely, given that we're meeting, if memory serves, and actually, as our sheet says, we meet next week, and then it's two weeks. So we meet the 11th and then the 25th, and certainly what I would like to do is, at our meeting on the 11th, have this topic again, but also have handouts in advance of that with dates and times, and, and again, probably mimicking what we did last time, and we can also, in the meantime, people can certainly feedback to me if they want, or just save it for Monday's discussion, if we think we should do our feedback from staff differently, or not, or those sort of things.
And could we include with that the goals again?
Yes.
You know, maybe some of the materials, I think we still have Ms. Pupple here for this week.
Three days.
Three days, but just whatever, this is going to, this is going to fall.
Close counting.
It's going to fall to the transition in that position as we get going, so whatever.
Right.
I mean, I think we can probably find most of this, but just, it would help me to look at what we, the evaluation tool and the goals. Those are the two, you may remember more in the schedule, of course.
Basically, those three pieces, because of course, at least two of them are readily available on the website, but we don't really get paid enough to have that many printer ink cartridges, so.
Yeah, they're probably like the.
It's nice to have like a kit of all the things.
Right.
And start putting that in its own folder.
Right, exactly. So, thank you for the reminders of, of some of that, but also it's helpful to me as far as keeping myself organized this week in preparation for both agenda review, agenda setting and, and just my own sort of work to prepare some materials.
You really guide us in that review process.
So, is there anything, any, any other topics about the evaluation and goal, well, goal setting may be a very different conversation this year.
Yeah, that may be truncated.
But nonetheless, I think anything else on that agenda item, if not, we'll, we'll move ahead.
Goal is to get us through this transition.
That's, that will be the goal.
That's right.
Well, I think, I think that one of the things that would be, that we might actually almost want to spend in some ways more time on as we're going through and doing our individual evaluations, is be thinking about, we often have a bunch of stuff we write at the end in kind of the open space, is be thinking about what are our recommendations to the future council?
Right.
As to, you know, we did this the, if, we decided to just do it the same way again, which, it's an awesome process, come on, it has its limitations, but it's a good process we've developed over the years, that it has its limitations, and these are, we went and did it the same way because it was just going to save time to do that.
Right.
But we would really recommend you look at this, 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 and this, as being things that, you know, rather than just trying to exactly copy what we were doing, even as amazing as we think it is, we know that we have challenges with it, and that way they can start thinking about, like, we can include that somehow in our evaluation as a, you know, notes to our future selves kind of thing, that, then they can be thinking about that from the beginning.
Right.
As opposed to, oh, right, we have to go ahead and evaluate that person.
But they're not going to think about it until they get to.
Right, well, that's the thing, is, you know, I've certainly thought about that as well, is what is the advice we want to give the council as far as this, because the other piece that we do, you know, we composite five evaluations into a single one, it's, how do they do that with 13 people? That's a much different animal than, than five. And I, having done the five one before, more than twice as many is, is a daunting task to say the least, and so is there a, you know, I think we should all sort of think about, is there advice we can give them about how to go about that process? And yet still be true to, you know, open meeting law, we saw things recently, I think that you may have shared with us, Ms. Brewer, regarding some communities that were not really doing their evaluation quite in alignment with, with open meeting law, and, and so we want to, you know, be, you know, careful to advise them about that as well, so that they, they don't, you know, drop into any pitfalls that, that most likely unintentional, but nonetheless can be problematic.
It makes me think, when we're doing the evaluation, I think it's certainly helpful, as Ms. Brewer suggests, to make some notes about, you know, advice we might want to give, but maybe we spend more time than that in one of our regular sessions, or maybe a separate session, where we work on a letter from this board to the future council that's a little more generic of it. Here's some things we've struggled with, you may want to, this is what we think you might want to think about, or, you know, it'll be sort of that movie about Schmidt, and we'll wrap it all in a nice package and give it to them, and they'll like put it over here and never look at it again, but I think we might want to develop that idea into something where we actually have a document, broader than just the manager evaluation, that's our letter to the future council. Talking about chapter one.
Seriously, because it's going to take more than one meeting to do that, and I think that it makes more sense for us to try and consider doing it on kind of a piece-part basis, like, okay, right now we're talking about evaluations.
Well, having that awareness in doing.
Let's make sure we make some notes, and so even if it never turns into this amazingly beautifully documented thing, but it's one section A, and another section is about project management, or whatever, but I think it's, if we try and just save it up for a whole working session, I think we're going to be slamming our heads off.
I disagree.
But you're right, we need to think about everything in light of the conversation.
So what I'm hearing, just since we've wandered into this path a little bit, is a topic for our future agendas, as much as we talk about charter transition, you know, update, maybe a part of that is this sort of compilation of, of ideas and, and advice. So I may, see if we can more explicitly put that onto our agenda in the future. I'm making note of that now.
Because of course we want more work to do.
And so if people want to offer a suggestion about how that could be in our agenda on a regular basis, how we might approach just even having good conversations and get things recorded, I'll take that advice, for sure.
I did just one quick question. Do you know if Mr. Wald is, when Mr. Wald is coming back, was he vice chair for June?
I know.
I do.
Perfect.
That was well played on his part.
He's away until June 26th, and he's, he's back on June 26th and away July 5th to 14th.
Maybe we should.
I was wondering about, Ms. Brewer is the next vice chair, if she and Mr., you should just take this under advisement, not decide this now, whether you should approach Ms. Brewer or Mr. Wald about flipping some dates so that you have a vice chair and benefit of Ms. Brewer's experience with organizing the evaluation process.
That actually crossed my mind this evening, when we, before the meeting, we discussed when Mr. Wald was being back. I didn't realize he was going to be gone quite so much of June as he is, but anyway, we will, I will take that under advisement, so thank you for that. And so, so I think we'll go to our next agenda item, unless there's something else we want to bring up on the last one there, and that is, in section five, committee board appointments and reappointments, the main thing is an announcement, we, our bylaw review committee as stipulated by the charter, is a three-member committee, and we've had a resignation of one of those members, and so we will need to find a replacement for that person fairly soon, because I think their ability to participate is perhaps been exhausted, so I think they're actually going to be one person short in the short term. So we will need to get ourselves a new person to serve in that role, unless someone had someone offhand.
Oh, I've already had two people turn me down. Three, actually, but the, if we could send us this, this is, is this now in our packet, this one? Because we, it's not on the page, and the page is really good.
On the page.
The charges, it's been added since I asked, because it's not.
The day you asked, was that?
Well, no one told me.
The text was on the page, and then the document was actually added to the page.
Right, no one told me it got added, so that's great.
I thought you looked like every hour.
Yeah, I look every hour to see if people follow up on the things I ask about. Sure, that would be a productive use of my time. And so, thank you, because I have been sending people there to read, I mean, there are already minutes there. They've been doing such a fabulous job of keeping that together. Mr. Kravitz has been an amazing support to them, so thank you, because that really helps people understand what they're signing up for, in addition to referring to, to talk to Ms. Moran in between packing boxes that she's doing.
Exactly.
Could I just add for people who are watching and don't know what we're talking about? So, one of the people on the, on the committee had warned us when they accepted the appointment that they were on the brink of a life change that involved moving, and that they would serve as long as they could, and that came about sooner than they might have thought. They didn't know when it would happen, so it's not that, you know, they, they left because they couldn't stand the committee.
Right.
Right, it was wonderful.
No drama on the committee.
They warned us and accepted it with a caveat, and then all happened really quickly, and so we appreciate her, her willingness to try to serve, and it just didn't work out.
Absolutely, yeah, there's, there is no drama on the committee.
Thank you, that's an excellent.
It is actually probably a very good group of folks to work with, and so, because I, I went to their last meeting on the 29th and observed how they work and what they're working on, and they're really, it's a, it is a, it's a good group of folks, and, you know, there's a significant task ahead of them, and they're, they're approaching it in a very thoughtful, in precise way in a lot of ways, and so they, they do need that additional person to really help to share the workload.
So we will keep this on the agenda until appointed? You can decide that tomorrow.
Right, I think we'll decide, but.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Probably be safest, and that way we wouldn't forget to put it on at some point, if somebody turns up at the last minute.
Absolutely. All right, so I think that, through most of that stuff, do we want to take care of the licenses on our agenda right now, or do we want to get back to our discussion of, of town meeting, or do we want to get into other, I'm open to suggestion from the board. So I, I would lean toward sort of taking care of the licenses and working our way through those.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion on 7 double I because there's a slight change to the wording of the motion on the motion sheet with the removal of the word, of the date Sunday in the third line, but I will move to approve the application of "The Kind Grind Incorporated Doing Business as Shared Coffee Roasters for a Common Victrolers License to Operate on the Premises of 178 North Pleasant Street, Monday through Sunday, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Marissa Smith, manager."
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for catching that.
Is there, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's unanimous with one absent. Please continue.
I move to approve the application of Invision America LLC Doing Business is Shiru Cafe for a Common Victrolers License to Operate on the premises of 17 Kellogg Avenue, Monday to Sunday, 8:30 AM to 10:00 PM. Yusuke Kakamoto, manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
As much as I'd love to just treat this all as consent calendar, I think it's only fair that we let the community know that this is an unusual business model, and they can go and check it out when it actually opens, but this, of course, is in the former, just as Share is moving over to what was Shea Albert, this is the current share space that's becoming the Shiru Cafe, and because we don't have anything else quite like it in town in terms of coffee is free for students who have signed into an app, basically, and provided information, and so it will be a really interesting way of potentially drawing more college students into downtown specifically for that, but people should not be surprised when they walk in, and it's not just another coffee shop. And they can find out more about how it works when it opens.
Actually, I think thanks to you, it was an article that's in the packet for this meeting.
Yes. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous with one absent as well.
I move to approve the request for reservation of two metered parking spaces immediately in front of the Greenfield Savings Bank branch at 108 North Pleasant Street on July 5, 2018, to park Eric Carl's signature Volkswagen Bug for the Art Night Plus event featuring Eric Carl's artwork. Kim Lee, business development specialist.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Yes.
So, is this in the category of they pay us for the use of the space, or not? I was, sometimes we have a fee attached to these motions, and there's not one here, so rather than having to decide each one, I wonder what the rule is, and.
I think this, I'm guessing this does not, because the next one, it cites the fee, so I'm guessing this is not one.
Based on what criteria?
What criteria, that's what we're wondering.
Well, I think it's because it's part of Art Tonight, which means the, I'm not saying that's the right reason, but I'm just saying, I think that may be it, but I'm not, we have time if we want to defer this, so you can.
I'm not saying whether that's a good or bad thing, I just, it's pretty pleasant to me.
Yeah, actually.
Why the bank wouldn't pay to have this, because they're making a request, and it's a display of their place.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, and maybe Mr. Steinberg is finding it, does it say the hours?
That's what I was looking for, actually.
Oh yeah, the date to bag the meter is on July 5th from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I think they're paying for it. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't, why they wouldn't, and so I think we should consider, our motion should indicate that they should pay for it, and if they have a problem with that, then we can revisit it.
Like $10 a space a day.
But it would only be $10, and it's only one space. I just don't understand.
It's two spaces.
Right, two spaces.
Two space bucks.
I, I just don't, while I, I am obviously understanding the difference between a dumpster and a nice Eric Carl Volkswagen Bug, I, I just don't understand the justification of taking central parking away during an event where people come downtown. So I would think that that would be something we would charge for.
So I guess the question is, do we want to not take action on it tonight, and take action on it next week, and get that clarified, or do we want to take action on it inclusive of the fee?
That's what you should do.
That would be my assumption, and then if there's a problem, we come back.
Yeah, okay, so.
So let's add to a $10 per day per meter for a total of $20.
Yeah, just like it did before.
And then it can, Ms. Pupple can discuss it.
The secondor accepts that amendment.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Yes.
I'm sorry, we should have also corrected it to say from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, because the subsequent one does, I think there was just, it was just left out. I'm saying the hours aren't listed.
Right.
And they should be, because we know what they are.
Yeah, so we can just send with the one above.
Squeeze that in there someplace. 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, as part of the motion, assuming the mover and secondor agree.
Yes.
Surely I do.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the request of Rambo for reservation of four metered parking spaces on the west side of the Amity Street Lot adjacent to the Bank of America Parking Lot on Friday, June 8, 2018, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the delivery and removal of office furniture, $10 per day per meter for a total of $40, Cynthia Lamera, executive assistant.
Second.
And there's a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
So do you want to go on to the consent calendar questions?
Yes, please.
So what I was, what I wrote for E, I wanted to go back to that first, and then I'm going to, because everything else will get moved as a consent calendar, as a single item, but we've already dealt with this before.
It's amended.
I would suggest something along these lines, move to approve the reservation of metered parking spaces bordering the town common for. For, um, artisan unloading and cleanup For Big Brothers, Big Sisters Crafts on the Common Event, 13 on the east side of South Pleasant Street, and 21 on the west side of Boltwood Avenue, Beginning at College Street and progressing north to the intersection of Spring Street, Beginning at 9:00 AM on Friday, June 22.
And then it's supposed to be PM.
Um, 9:00 PM, yeah, right, 9:00 PM on Friday, June 22, 2018, and then period. And, and by the way, Ms. Trubachman, I will send this to you if it's adopted, so you, um, the first five me, and then the next sentence, the first five metered parking spaces On South Pleasant Street Beginning at the intersection of Spring Street, Moving south to remain reserved until 7:00 AM On Saturday, June 23, 2018, And the remaining, um, reserved until 9:00 AM On Saturday, June 23, 28, or 2018, And again on Saturday, June 23, 2018, From 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM, period.
So, I think that, that all the spaces, uh, including the, the five, I believe, that are being released at 7:00 AM, but those five plus the others are all being reserved on the afternoon of, from 3:30 to 6:30.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, we could actually put that in, um, "And all spaces..."
Right.
It just gets more and more complicated.
We'll just speak to this.
It'll, it'll come out all right.
Right.
So, it'll be, so, um, so the ending will be, "And all spaces On Saturday, June 23, 2018, From 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM."
So, I'll take that as a motion to amend the original motion. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And so, that would be an amended motion for that, to supplant the other.
We're actually doing some work for the future council, because next year...
Right.
And, um, then, I move to approve the items listed On the Consent Calendar for June 4, 2018 Agenda As Presented Except for Part E.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's taken care of.
I just have a quick comment.
Yes, please.
I meant to bring this up way back on the first page, when we were back with Ramble, who I pronounced, mispronounced their name, for the four metered parking spaces In the, what the cinema often thinks of as its lot, or the library often thinks of as its lot. Um, if we could please, and I realize staff time is at a premium right now, but if we could please advise both the library and the cinema that we know that that's there, so that, and, and it's during the day, and so hopefully won't have a huge impact on either one of those facilities, but just so that if they get complaints, that they know that we did it on purpose, but sometimes people just have to move. They shouldn't put the dumpster.
Also, it's important for them to know it was authorized.
Yes.
Somebody just does it with a, with a couple of cones and decides...
Because we have seen that happen, yes, that is a good point.
Okay. So now, heading back into our agenda, um, I guess we'll take up our, our conversation About the annual town meeting and wrap up in discussion. And so, I think if, if we would like to discuss some of the topics That are a result of town meeting and its outcomes, um, I'm gonna pull back my memo on that, but... Who would like to go first?
Well, I appreciate what Mr. Steinberg said, you know, why, why talk about it? It's possibly, quite, quite likely the last one. Um, it's a select board meeting, but I think it's okay to say, I've, I found it very, a very difficult meeting. Um, I think there were a lot of subtexts going around, and, um, I feel good about the work that this board put in as a board and as individual members. As usual, a lot of preparation and thoughtfulness about getting ready. Every, um, night before town meeting, we had an hour-long meeting, and pretty much used all of that, a lot in preparation for town meeting. And, um, you know, I found the budget amendments, um, very, very difficult, and, um, I found the tenor of the meeting difficult. I think we dealt with it in a professional and even manner, but I, I just want to acknowledge that it was hard. I think it was hard for town meeting members for all kinds of different reasons. Um, but I think we, you know, also the staff and Mr. Bachman, it took a lot of work to prepare, and, um, I just want to acknowledge, I think it was a hard one, and I feel good about the work that we did, and a lot of, um, things that we care about were approved, including the budget and the capital budget, and some important zoning happened, and, um, even though it's not necessarily something to pass on, like a way to improve something and make it more efficient, it's, um, we, it's okay to spare a minute to just talk about what our experience was.
And I would just like to incur regarding the, the hard work, I think especially of staff, it was, it was, you know, uh, we were all sort of operating in a, in a bit of a unknown state, as it were, about how, how to deal with certain topics and certain issues, and, and a lot of fluidity to, to the meeting and the potential motions and that sort of thing. And I know that Mr. Bachman and his staff, town council, all had to do, you know, they always do a lot of work around town meeting, but I think especially so this time, and so, it's greatly appreciated by us, and so, I want to convey that to you, as well as to the staff and town council, that that, that that work was appreciated, and we understand how, uh, difficult it was for everybody. And, and I think you're right, I think it's, you know, it was difficult for town meeting members, it was difficult for us as participants of finance committee, school committee. I think everybody had a lot of struggle in a lot of ways, because there were a lot of questions And a lot of, um, you know, unknowns. And so, it was a, a tricky meeting in a lot of ways, and, and, uh, but I do think we, you know, got to reasonable outcomes by and large, and, and, you know, again, kudos to you and staff and council on, on helping us through that.
I mean, not just that, to let, not just appreciated, but that it was noticed, even though we're sitting up there with our straight faces on, but it doesn't mean We're not aware of the amount of work and that, and their presence there.
Right. So, were there other?
Oh, yeah. Oh, just getting started.
So, one of the other things I wanted to follow up along those lines, and again, all of our appreciation to staff, and one of the things that I look forward to In the future form of government is not putting staff to sit in the back of the room For hours at a stretch with comp time in the future, and then being away from their families, and it turns out, oh, yeah, you're not getting to your article tonight anyway. Like, that, they, they're immense patience with that, and their willingness to continue to show up, because it's the form of government That we have had all this time, I think really speaks to a lot. And I sometimes think that people in the audience do not respect the amount of effort and time. You do your job all day long, and then you're still sitting there Just in case your thing comes up tonight, and just in case there are questions tonight. And they can't always read everyone's mind as to what they might be asked. Um, another thing that made things particularly awkward That I don't think we can really say is a note to the future council, but just to remind ourselves why things felt perhaps more fraught than usual in many cases, was because we'd had the awkward interaction where we believed That we were going to be acting on certain town meeting articles, and then the moderator changed his mind as to what we were going to do with those articles. And so, it just made that much more work, because we were trying to figure out Multiple plays on every single situation, given the circumstances there. And so, yes, town meeting's always a lot of work, there's always a lot of prep, there's always people sitting in the back of the room. But when you layer on all these other difficulties, it did make it that much more challenging. And so, I was personally more short-tempered with things, because we had gone through so much associated with trying to figure that out And trying to give the right guidance, not because we necessarily were particularly beholden To a particular opinion, but when the playing field changed, it made it difficult for us. So, I appreciated that. Um, I did write down early on, and then I kind of lost interest in doing so, but some questions to follow up on in terms of the kinds of questions people have That we do hear fairly regularly, and we aren't always as prepared to, to say in a concise way, and that's partly because they're complex issues, like OPEB, where half, at least half the room is like, I know it's a big thing, I know we have to do it, let's do it, we're done. And it could just be a consent calendar item, because they've heard enough about it over time That they know it's just an obligation. But there are always some people who do want to hear more about, well, what, for example, happens if the region isn't putting enough money in? And then, you know, as things play out into the future, how does that work? And so, being better prepared, I think, to think about those things, and to be able to remind people, as we eventually do during every session, about how the enterprise funds work, oh, but except that enterprise fund That doesn't actually have enough money to do that, et cetera. It, it's just a lot for people to absorb, for that small segment of people Who actually want to try and understand that better. And I'm just not sure how much more we can put in writing. I'm not saying there's a perfect solution to that, because it is just a very complex topic, but it, um, it sometimes throws people for a loop. Um, in terms of our EMS, I think that we, we have not always done a great job Of explaining where our calls are coming from, and I think we could do a little bit better with that Instead of making more broad estimates associated with UMass use, and with downtown use, and with senior citizens use, et cetera. I think there should be more of a cheat sheet available when those kinds of questions come up around the budget, because I know people talk about it in great detail while the budgets are being developed. And the finance committee puts a lot in the book, but being able to just go ahead And spout off a couple of those statistics, I think, would be really helpful to people, because people do make a lot of assumptions about how those things work.
More fine-grained.
Yeah, and, um, and, and so, it doesn't seem like we're just kind of, you know, going with it on the spot, even though everybody does implicitly trust, I think largely, the public safety chiefs. And finally, associated with, because again, I mean, how many nights did I actually do this for, before I stopped? But, associated with our sidewalk planning and figuring out, because more and more people have become interested in our sidewalks, and rather than saying, well, you can find this much information in the JCPC, et cetera, it's probably another project page we need someplace to be able to point people towards, so that during the run-up to budget discussions in future council meetings, people can go and refresh themselves on what all the planning is associated with that, just putting out more and more information, because, again, you know, a lot of that was discussed in great detail at JCPC meetings, but it doesn't all make it into the report, and just having a place to be able to go and say, this is where the big thinking is around sidewalks, I think, would help people to show that, yeah, we do have plans, actually, we're not just doing this on a, you know, a very casual basis. There is a, a well-thought-out process behind this, and maybe there are gaps In the way we've been explaining that to people.
Well, I think the TAC's still getting to that place.
Yes, they could be very helpful with that.
I think they're in that, in that process of articulating that plan of prioritized work, I guess is the best way to describe it, as well as, you know, how does the complete streets piece fit in with sidewalk? Because that's part of the complete streets vision. Speaking which, we have that to sign tonight before we leave. Um, but I think that, that that's, will hopefully become a more prominent part of the, the TAC's work And their page is to have that, both from a street standpoint, but also inclusive of sidewalk, bike lanes, all of those conversations, so that when, you know, capital planning is going on, you have a sense of where the, where the work will happen.
Just, if I could interject something, uh, about the sidewalk and street planning, but particularly sidewalks. It happened at town meeting, it happened at joint capital planning committee, probably happen at council meetings. When you start talking about sidewalk needs, people immediately think about their street or their sidewalk, even at JCPC, but, oh, well, I live on, and that intersection is really bad, because it's what they know, and, you know, but they immediately, and it was happening in town meeting, people immediately started talking about the one they knew about. And when there is more information, when TAC has that list, people want to go look and see where their street, or their intersection, or their sidewalk is on the list. And it goes a long way towards answering their questions if they, oh, it's in the third year, because that's when there's this other, you know, whatever it is. But people immediately relate the conversation to their own kind of piece of neighborhood. So, that's just, it seems to be human nature, because it was happening.
Well, the thing I think about is that with the streets, because we've gone through with, I think Scan Street's the name of the company, it goes through and does a grade on each of the streets, on the roadway portion of it, if we have some similar type of metric for our sidewalks. I mean, there's more to it than just the condition of it, but, you know, if, if, if that's a place That TAC gets to as far as either a rubric for organizing, or, and, and so then people have that as a touchstone To then go and look at maybe some other section of town, and they say, wow, that's way ahead of mine, why so much? And they go to that street, and they realize, oh, that sidewalk's, you know, crumbling, or whatever.
So, Scan Street can do sidewalks too, they have a similar machine, so, you know, Segway That goes alongside and does the same kind of analysis. I felt like the $20,000 was gonna be, just, I'd rather spend it on sidewalks than a machine Looking at sidewalks, because we have so, so many needs. Um, so, I mean, there are some debates as to whether, um, the priority, where, where the priority is on some sidewalks. Clearly sidewalks when roads are being rebuilt go, you know, that, that's part of the project. Um, you know, whether you're trying to connect centers, or if you're trying to do loops, that people walk in loops sometimes, that, and, and so, one of the things that we looked at actually is Strava, which is the, um, the, uh, the fitness app. You can get the data from anybody who wears it, where they, where they travel, because it collects the data, and you can sort of superimpose where the heavy-use things, instead of just sort of eyeballing things and like that, that's at least one source of data That's already existing in the world. Um, so Amy Rezekia suggested we look at something like that. Um, so there's different ways of looking at the whole sidewalk thing. We don't have a lot of money to do sidewalks, we have a little bit, but not as much as we obviously need.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would add to some of the comments that have been made Is that, um, it's important to distinguish between items That will come up in the future from the council, and, um, to remember that We now are getting into a legislative body that is going to be meeting on a regular basis throughout the year, possibly soon bi-weekly until we know otherwise, because they haven't figured out their own schedule yet, obviously, because they haven't elected. But, um, once they do, you know, they will be in a pattern where they can request information, and then the proper staff person can be scheduled to come in and doesn't have to wait, and, um, information can just be provided to them in the ongoing course of doing business. And I think that that's one of the advantages of having something that meets year-round, as opposed to having a body that meets for a short period of time twice a year. Um, and, uh, that is distinguishable from what we were just talking about, which is an item that, um, we would urge recognition, and I think manager's aware of this, that there's a large body of public that would like that information, and how, not to make it accessible just to the councils, the legislative body, but how we make something available to the public and information where the public has a great interest. And so, those are two distinguishable things. And my last comment is, is we're extending thank yous. I would also like to extend a thank you to Superintendent Morris and Mr. Mungano, um, in particular, because there were a number of questions that came up regarding school issues, and, um, they were extremely responsive in getting, um, information back to town meeting quickly. And, um, I think they'd serve our thanks for that.
Thank you, I, I appreciate the thanks, but, uh, provided to the schools, employees, but also to, you know, trying to sort of segment which kinds of things are the things That are like websites where you can find your street, and you can find your sidewalk, versus the actual council needing to look at it, and then looking at it throughout the year at a scheduled time. So, that will be really handy for everyone, including the people who are watching at home, who've already looked up their sidewalk, and now know they're gonna talk about it on a particular night, as opposed to some randomly scheduled night. Um, this is the part where you may wish to dissociate yourselves with me, but this is the part that's going to get... that's going to get a little bit tricky in terms of how to say this that's not going to offend people. And I don't think it's going to work, that I'm still going to end up offending people. TMCC and eventually TMAC, since TMAC has been elected, has worked really hard to get a lot of information out to people. They've been excellent at providing handouts in our packets. And I think that that sort of thing will, you know, be an important thing for the council's, whatever, employees to work with the town manager, to figure out ways to do that sort of thing to help, you know, make processes clear. I think that's really helpful to people. I do have substantial concerns about the style of what we used to call precinct meetings and became warrant review meetings because we used to distinguish because we said there was one thing that was a warrant review meeting that was sponsored by the League of Women Voters and TMCC. And then there were precinct meetings and those became more broad because people realized that people in a neighborhood couldn't necessarily all show up at a certain time on a certain day. And so they said anybody could come to them. My problem with those, and I understand that we are going to have a, we have some structure in the new charter associated with this, but in terms of the suggestions to future people on the council to really think hard, not only about what those specific outreach meetings are that they're required to have in the charter that no one's been required to have up until this point. So that'll be a new thing that we'll already be figuring out. But also to consider other topic specific meetings that are staffed, so to speak, by people who know the answers to the questions people are going to ask. I remain incredibly frustrated that we would go to town meeting, having everyone worked on everything, and people would talk about things they learned at review meetings that were not based on facts. They were based on opinions. And there had not been adequate factual information provided at those, in those settings. And so I just would caution our future counselors as they come up with those meetings within their districts to work very carefully with staff to find out, okay, is there a thing that I really need expertise on here to answer questions associated with? Or that I say, I'll go find that out from those people and come back rather than expecting staff, again, to go to 80 bazillion things. But at the same time, having just experienced it with, unfortunately, being at the time period when we thought we were not going to be acting on certain articles and then finding out two days later that we were, which obviously didn't make for that pleasant of a conversation at the particular warrant review I was at then. But it was no different than any other warrant review I've ever been to, which has been many over the years. And there was this feeling that it was for the people who'd shown up to talk about what they were concerned about, and that's very valuable. But at the same time, there were people there who were there to learn about the articles and they were not hearing even two sides of the issue, much less the three or five sides of the issue that may have come out. And so I found them in some ways to be negatively, rather than beneficial toward the legislative process. And that's one of the reasons I was hesitant to deal with TMAC as well. And obviously, TMAC doesn't have anything to do if there aren't any town meetings. But I hope that people will think hard about what they're trying to accomplish in those things and balance that with working carefully with, through the town manager as to what expectations are of staff. Because I know that over the years, it also became clear that there were some people who believed they should just go directly to staff and expect staff to show up for certain things. And that, all those kinds of standards, I think, are really important things for the future council to look at and for the town manager to be really clear about that things need to go through the town manager and that things, when there are public meetings, that we need to understand how we're educating people because we need to be making, it doesn't, I don't even think the word balanced is exactly the right word. It's that there has to be somebody there who can explain the actual situation that's on the table. And then people can disagree with facets of it, but to not even be able to explain what the basic issue is, I think, is very unfortunate and does a disservice to our community.
The terms I'm thinking of are information versus advocacy.
Yes.
And sort of keeping those distinctions clear.
And there's a place for both.
Right.
Like, for example, tonight when Mr. Steinberg asked Mr. Mauring about the one-way decision, that was, we got a factual answer from somebody who knew rather than, well, you know, I saw it this way or there. But what I wanted to say is, I know we have the guidance document from KP Law clarifying special town meeting requirements. And I wonder, because I did wonder when we elected the TMAC and voted for TMCC again, thinking if there aren't going to be any more town meetings, what will these people do? And maybe being clear about expectations. So if we're thinking it's our direction that we're not going to have special town meetings, except in the narrow band given in that, to maybe write to that group, if they have meetings planned over the summer with a thought or an expectation that there might be a fall special town meeting, because I think I've heard from people, that expectation, maybe we owe it to TMAC and DMCC to clarify where our board is at about special town meetings. So they're not going on one set of assumptions and we're going on another set of assumptions. But also maybe be an opportunity to thank TMCC for all the service they have provided to town meeting. But I think we're making an assumption or have an expectation based on KP Law, whether they even read it or not, and their expectations may be really different.
So I would say if the board thinks that that's a worthwhile thing to do, that I might compose a letter of that sort, not terribly lengthy, but just to sort of articulate, you know, from that. It's directly to them. So as opposed to them, you know, again, talking about sort of meetings and public training.
Going to a website and reading a memo.
Right. It's more proactive to reach out to them and have that conversation. So I would, I'd be willing to write that, and then probably circulate it amongst you for feedback and go from there.
Right. Because it's basically a cover, it can be a cover memo to that exact document that we have the URL, but our interpretation of that, I think, would be really valuable for people. Everybody knows we're on the same page.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. That's really a good idea. Yeah.
Thank you for that suggestion. And I will compose that. I have a light meeting schedule this week, so I'm offering myself to do that.
I'll remind you at the end of the week.
That's right. Yeah, if you don't see something by Thursday, Friday.
Sounded like a good idea.
Right. So are there other comments or topics we wanted to bring up relative to town meeting and sort of wrapping that up? I want to make sure we have an opportunity to sort of clear that out. And hopefully Mr. Wald will share any thoughts he might have via email in the short term, but.
Thank you for giving us an opportunity.
No, it's absolutely, I'm glad that we, I fully had forgotten that when I was moving us along in the agenda. And so I'm glad you've reminded me because it is a valuable process that we go through in having that conversation. So I think next on our agendas is, we'll go to the town manager's report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I, as everybody, I hope, knows, Ms. Deborah Pupple is retiring. Her last day of work will be Thursday of this week. We had a really nice gathering on Friday afternoon and the chair spoke and people, several people complimented me on your speech because they really felt it was moving. And I think she, Ms. Pupple was really pleased, I think, and has expressed that to people about the number of people who showed up, the select board members who were in town who showed up, and the former select board members and representatives from the University of Massachusetts and, you know, department heads and colleagues. And she was, and I thought, I was really happy that her husband and her mother and her sister were there because sometimes they don't really appreciate, they don't understand how much people appreciate their daughter or sister or wife. And this was really a great venue for people to articulate how much Ms. Pupple meant to the community and the work that she did over the course of the years, especially during those really traumatic times when she, she didn't want to keep it together, but had to keep it together while everybody else was not keeping it together. So, and a lot of people, you know, others have said, a lot of people have received credit for that. But she was really a pivotal person in that whole scenario as well. So, and then we also know that, and we'll talk more about this later, Ms. Burgess will be retiring at the end of June. But I'm pleased to announce that we have two very excellent candidates who I've appointed in there to fill their roles. First, Margaret Nardowitz will be returning to the town as town clerk. She's a town government veteran who was hired by Stan Zomack in 1988 as a clerical assistant in the DPW and then was transferred to the town, got transferred to the town clerk's office. And she eventually served as assistant town clerk, acting town clerk and town clerk until 2003. And then she, with her children at a certain age, decided she went to work part time and became the town administrator in Sunderland. And then currently is serving as a town administrator in Rutland. This was an opportunity she was eager to embrace. It's a, and so she's very excited to return to the town of Amherst. So we have someone who's experienced both as a town clerk and as a town administrator, which I'm really pleased about because of the role that this town clerk, well, I anticipate, will play in terms of both being the town clerk, but also helping to serve the new council, much as the town clerk serves the town meeting now. I'm hoping that the council will see that Ms. Nardowitz will be that person to do that. Really happy about that. Very strong applicant pool. And it's a tough decision, but she was certainly with that, that combination of qualifications rose to the top. As terms of the executive assistant to the town manager, I've hired Angela Mills, who is currently administrative assistant at Crocker Farm Elementary School. And she is an Amherst resident, graduate of Amherst College, parent and sports coach, who's worked at Crocker Farm for eight years while her children were young. Now they're a little bit older and she's eager to take on a new challenge and work year round. She's also worked at Smith College, Trinity College, and Northfield Mount Herman School. She did a tremendous job through the interview process and is a real person who gets things done, which is really something that we all know with Ms. Pupple's experience, we need someone who's able to take on tasks and make decisions and get things done. So Ms. Nardowitz has to give 60 days notice under her contract with Rutland, so she won't start until August 1. She was in last Friday and she's going to be coming in on Fridays to work with Ms. Burgess over the course of the summer so she can start to get up to speed on some of the election stuff that she's out of date on. She'll be obviously going to school for additional, to get the updates on town clerk things. There'll be one month in between where Ms. Adet, the assistant town clerk, has agreed to serve as the acting town clerk for the month of July, because these are all going to be critical times with the election dates and things like that. So it's really fortunate that we have Ms. Adet, who's totally experienced in this work as well, ready to step in and will, you know, handle the work without, without missing a beat. Ms. Mills, we've agreed that she will finish out the school year at Crocker Farm and then will move over to us probably around July 1, depending on her schedule and her kids' schedules, basically. And so there, we will have a few weeks without, without anybody in that position. But Ms. Pupple has agreed to come back when Ms. Mills is available full time to help guide her through the job. We had really strong interview committees who helped review the candidates and put them through their paces. The town clerk screening committee included Robert Pam, Joan Rabine, Jeff Kravitz, Kay Moran, and Joanne, Ms. Yazek from my, from the HR office. And for the executive assistant, we had Stephanie O'Keefe, Deb Radway, Dave Zomack, and Brianna Sunrid. All put in a lot of time, reviewed, there were a lot of candidates for both positions, very competitive positions, but really felt like we hit home runs with both positions and felt we had a pretty deep talent pool of people who had applied. So that was, it was really gratifying to see the number of people who are eager to work for the town of very high quality. And typically, I think Ms. Pupple said this, the reason she came to Amherst, because she was, came from as a small town administrator, was that she wanted to work with a group of talented colleagues and that's what she found. And that's what several of these people said, well, I want to work with a team of people who are really good at their jobs and that's what was inspiring me. So very happy with those. Those are the big news for us and it was a big relief for us. A big effort by the Deb Radway and Joanne to make all this come together. That's a lot of logistics and confidentiality that has to be played and they did a great job. A few other things I want to mention, you've got the written report and I'm just going to highlight a few things. The next cup of joe is Friday. It's going to be at Amherst Coffee with Economic Development Director Jeff Kravitz. And we're talking about economic development a lot this summer. I thought he would be a good person to be there to help answer questions. But anybody can come back, come around and talk to anything, about anything there. There will be some, the sculptures that were discussed with the board before, they've relocated all the sculptures to Kendrick Park. So we will have four temporary sculptures placed in Kendrick Park. One thing that I want to make a point of is that there are going to be some trees taken down, but it's not related to this. The tree warden said over the past six years, we've been removing remnants of an old hemlock hedge on Kendrick Park as they have declined or died from hemlock woolly deluged. Today I made the call to remove the remaining trees since they were either dead or would be in a couple of years. And he just, he was saying that the crosstown art installations don't have anything to do with it, but it will seem like it to people. But they're two separate events and he's been meaning to do this. We talked about the social services funding. We talked about the Factory Hollow Dyke. So, talked about the charter change. Oh, and I was really pleased that the LSSC staff were at South Point to gather information from people. And David and I went down there and it was sort of not a great day, but they set up at a great place because they were in between the residences and where the mailboxes are. So everybody had to walk by them if they're going to go to their mailbox. I've invited a consultant in to do a review of operations on the first floor of our offices. And I think I mentioned this to you before, that, you know, we have, you know, a soon to be vacant town clerk position. We have a, the treasure collector position vacant. We have a number of people who are anticipating retiring or know their date already or are thinking about things. And what I was, really felt the need for is someone who would look at this objectively in terms of creating a three, five, seven-year plan for how we were going to be staffing that entire first floor. So for relatively short money, we've hired a person who's, has been a treasure collector. Her name is Maureen Valente, has also been town administrator, town manager in the town of Sudbury, and also by happenstance, the executive director of the Mass School Building Authority, very, and worked at the International City Management Association, very experienced person. She's been here. She's interviewed a number of people. She's going to talk to everyone on the first floor, understand what their jobs are, what their concerns are, and try to help think through some of the things that staffing decisions, help me think through the staffing decisions as we move forward over the next few years. So we have a game plan on where we're going. This is typically something that I think the finance director would do, but we don't have someone in that, in that position at this moment in time. And, but I still need that high level of thinking and I think she will provide that. And so that's where the funds will be coming from, from the finance director's salary, basically. Beacon Communities, want to highlight that the official groundbreaking is June 14. And the chair will be speaking at that, along with, there's some hope that the governor will show up. And that's, that'd be really exciting if he did. It's a big project. Many of you were at the Bang Center for the Busanee Center opening. They received their final permits on June 1. And again, the chair spoke at that. And the official opening date for the Busanee Center is now set for June 11. We talked about the North Common. Health insurance, the change to a new health insurance, fully insured product is going around really well along, again, HR has been handling most of this, along with Kay Zolgar and school staff. We've had 22 information meetings. Typically, I do a little present, you know, two or three, two to five minute presentation about why we're doing things. And then the Blue Cross and Maya people explain what we're doing. And that's been doing. And that's been, those have been really good. People have been pretty receptive. Some people are upset about the change and they express that, but, you know, that's to be under, to be expected. We have two people, Amy Reszeki and Holly Bowser, who've been accepted into the Suffolk University MMA Certificate in Local Government Leadership and Management Program. That's will begin in September. It's really good. It's a very competitive academic program. It'd be held in Northampton, so it's convenient to everybody. It's 25 days of class, five graduate-level courses. And there's two people who aspire to be leaders in the, in the community, in the town, and we're really eager to cultivate their interest in being, being leaders and developing a broader range of expertise in HR, in finance, in strategic planning, and all the different community involvement things that, that you need to be a good community leader. And I think that's enough for, if you have questions. I'll have to answer them.
Questions for the manager relative to his report, or? If not, then, well, thank you for that.
Informative.
What's that? I'm sorry?
Just very informative. Thank you.
Yes, it was. Absolutely. So I would say we could, yes, go ahead.
Actually, this is something I'd like to have, find some way to discuss appropriately at a future meeting, which is, as a follow-up on the public comment we received earlier associated with the bid, I am not asking for the same things the public comment person asked for. However, what I'm asking about is for the town manager to remind us about the fact that the town is part of the bid. And so I remain somewhat concerned about the fact that the bid wrote a letter that said something that the town is therefore party to, if the town is part of the bid. And the same, in a similar vein, there was information associated with town meeting article on inclusionary zoning, where the bid had hired an attorney to refute what the town was trying to do. And I just am trying to understand and hope that we could have a brief discussion about that at some point in the future, how the town hires an attorney to sue itself over a zoning article. So that, that it, which is not, I'm sure, the way the bid would describe it, but that is kind of how it turns out when you're a member of the bid and the bid goes and does something like that. So I would like a better understanding of how that works moving forward. And that applies to the council as well, in terms of understanding how that role of the town fits in as a bid member, as opposed to just a partner, so to speak.
When there are points of conflict between what the bid membership may want to do versus the town's goals?
I don't think there's a lawsuit against the town by the bid.
No, but when-
I think you said there was a lawsuit. There is not.
I should not have said that. I said threatened suit against, the town threatened suit against itself, basically through its membership in the bid. And it doesn't make sense to me that, and that's the conversation I would like you to have with whoever you need to have it before you describe it to us again, because the town is a paying member of the bid and provides certain services in lieu of money, et cetera. And then the bid says, "Here's what the bid thinks about this," that gets, starts getting a little bit muddy. And they thought they should talk about a potential litigation, though not an actual lawsuit.
Are there other comments?
That'll be an interesting topic. I'll be here for that one.
So if there's not other questions for the manager, I'd ask the members for their reports. So select board member reports, if anyone has any meetings or otherwise that they've gone to.
Can I quick ask a question of the town manager? I even pulled this out of my old stack of papers for you. I thought that you wanted to talk about the Sustainability Committee Charge again at some point?
At some point, I do.
Okay. Pardon me?
At some, at some point, I do, but it would be on the agenda.
Right. Somehow, I was under the impression it was now. And so, okay, great.
We're not ready for that.
Excellent.
So I will mention one quick thing. I did go to the ag comm meeting this past week and, and so they're heading into their dormant period when the farmers themselves are not dormant, but they are as a committee because they're just, the farmers are busy, you know, when you get to this time of year. And so they typically take the summer off and come back in September. But the topic that was on their agenda was marijuana cultivation. And so I, my suggestion to them was to reach out to Mr. Kravitz and have him perhaps kind of bring together some of the information specifically about that, that's evolving out of the Cannabis Control Commission and, you know, our own regulation, that sort of thing, just to give them, and he's got time, because they aren't going to be until September, but to kind of bring it together, because I think it's potentially that, that some folks, either farmers themselves or other businesses, may reach out to farmers to, you know, sort of activate cultivation in our community, because we are a farming community. And there may be some interest in that. And given that adult use marijuana doesn't require the vertical integration that medical marijuana did, I guess, is the current circumstance, changes the dynamics of a lot of that. So I think that's a topic that they will take up in earnest in the, in the fall, because I think they, as a membership, and also farmers in town, will also be interested in, in, in that topic and sort of what, what the rules are, what the constraints, you know, all those kinds of things are. So that was really the primary piece of it. We didn't get into any real detail at this point, but, but that was what was on the agenda for the, for the ag comm. So who would like to go next?
And because it's also, I'm like, two things. And one is about marijuana, so maybe I'll do that one first, since you were just talking about it. So the zoning articles around marijuana establishments passed at town meetings. It's the third time we've gone to town meeting to try to keep up with the regulatory changes. And I think we're doing a good job. But today, the internal working group on marijuana, all things marijuana, met. We hadn't met for a while because, first of all, we're working on stuff for town meeting and then the town meeting period. And we spent most of the meeting, and Ms. Brewer was there as well, so she may want to chime in, looking at a memo that Mr. Kravitz wrote to Mr. Bockelman in May, in mid-May, May 14, which was talking about the issue of licensing. We've talked about another layer of regulatory control with local licensing. And in this memo, just the snippet that I thought, I think we spent most of our time with, it says, "Delaying additional retail marijuana establishments until such a time as the town develops and implements a local licensing process as a prudent course of action because of the significant interest Amherst has received by potential recreational marijuana retail operators. Amherst does not currently have a policy in place to evaluate and consider the benefits of a particular establishment vis-à-vis another potential establishment." And it talks about delaying any more decisions on, for recreational use, not the ones that are medical now and can co-locate, but this should be a date certain July 1, 2019, in which additional recreational retail establishments will be considered, even if local licensing has not been set up. Third, the manager may choose to end this policy at any time prior to July 1, 2019. So we spent a lot of time, in my mind, the local licensing process comes at the end of a number of permits and reviews and gives the town one more tool to kind of take back a license in the way we do, sort of like rental registration. But, and other people felt like it was an evaluation criteria that if we didn't like one establishment because it wasn't offering things more aligned with our goals or values, we could use a licensing to reject that applicant, maybe holding out for an applicant that was offering more of what we wanted. And so we spent a lot of time talking about that. And it made me think that it would be worthwhile having that conversation, conversation on a future select board agenda, that it's more of a community conversation. I mean, again, we're in uncharted waters. What is the role of the license? Ms. Brewer had said, well, some communities, the CCC says, you don't have to just accept any old, you know, Tom Dicker Harry walks through the door. You can set out what your preferred criteria is in a request for proposal kind of process. We hadn't really explored that. So, because the downtown sites that are eligible now with the buffer zone are quite limited, there's sort of some competition for those. And is it like first one through the door, or is it the one who, you know, offers the best package, whatever those elements are? I'm not sure we even know what it is that we prefer over something else. But now that we're kind of back to thinking about the next stage of this, what would this board like to do? So I was suggesting it as a, as a future agenda item, but it's kind of a fresh conversation. And let me just add the only other report. Downtown Parking Working Group has met last, last week and the week prior. We're working on finalizing a memo to the town manager on a number of points that he had come and discussed with that group. And I'm hoping we, we put it through us. Wednesday, we meet. The select board has a hearing date for the changes. We talked about it a couple of weeks ago, another memo with some immediate recommendations that are in that. So there's a memo to the manager. Almost done. And then there's a couple more meetings this summer. We hope to be helping flesh out a scope and an RFP, RFQ for a parking consultant to work with the committee now that the budget's approved, but won't be in effect till July 1. So it's my parking update. You can tell from earlier conversations tonight, it's, for me, it's all about park and pay. Park, you pay. Anyway, I don't know. Was there anything else on the marijuana conversation?
So if I could first start with the second part of her report, which is, when is the hearing? I know we talked about when we thought we might be able to schedule it, but were we able to yet?
I think it's-
Twenty-fifth, I think.
Yeah.
It's the 25th, because the notice timeline was such that we needed-
So it's our last June meeting?
I think so.
Because we didn't think we had enough time to do it before then.
Public hearing, because we're going to do Fisher Street, impact on Harris Street, Olympia Drive.
Could we please put that in next week's packet, the, a copy of that notice?
We haven't written yet, but sure.
Oh. Well, I mean, I know you have to get it sent into the Gazette.
14 days prior to 14, so we have to have it in by the 11th.
But at least you have that date in your mind.
Right. So that's helpful. But yeah. And then just once it's written, I don't mean like a separate thing, just once it's written, to put that in our packet, but it, we should just make that, depending on the timing. So in regards to the marijuana issue, to be, to be really clear on the fact that Mr. Kravitz is put in this incredibly awkward position on a regular basis, that's apparently what, one of the things we pay him for, is to interact with people who are coming up with ideas for different kinds of businesses. And it's really difficult for him to give guidance that reflects what the community thinks with marijuana, because it's still such a new topic. And so we can obviously talk about the planning, you can talk about the different conversations we've had, but he's, he's in an interesting position that, that's all too easy for anyone from anywhere to criticize, whether within or without a town hall. So I appreciate that he, it would be really helpful to him to have some written guidance. And so I appreciate that, and again, he doesn't work for us. Only the town manager works for the select board. And so I, I really appreciated that he put something together, because we've been, you know, working around this issue. What would, we kept saying we wanted the ability to do local licensing, even though we didn't know what it was. We just wanted to be able to have that option. And he has put in a ton of work, you know, working with other groups. And the CCC has also gotten additional information associated with the other CCC, you know, associated with what local regulations look like elsewhere. And since every state is different and there are county-level things and yada, 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 nothing's ever simple and nothing's easily just like, oh, boom, we'll just take theirs. Theirs is good. So he's done a ton of research, but is also trying to figure out how to answer questions for people associated with things. And so I appreciated that he put this policy together. He even let the internal working group look at it and, you know, and provide feedback associated with it. And then he gave it to his employer, the town manager. And I do think it is, even though the town manager has all the authority to actually sign host community agreements, which is why we have never discussed the components of community, host community agreements until later after they were signed, except in a very broad sense, many years ago. I think it's probably it's time for us to try and, despite our summer schedule, find a way to have this conversation, because applications are going to start coming in for purely recreational. We also need to have, I think, the actual conversation that we've been kind of dancing around for a while, as to whether or not we are willing to entertain any additional letters of support or non-opposition for medical, because he needs to be able to answer those questions effectively to people when they call him up. You know, they're not coming and waiting for the select board to have a conversation three weeks from now. They're asking him what's going to happen next week. And so it's, it puts him in a really difficult position. And so as we dug into this further, we realized that that concept about the values and the benefits is really tricky, right? Because, you know, one person can interpret it one way, based on what they believe they've been hired to do, but then if they're going to get second-guessed, that's really not to their advantage. So we don't have a great way right now of capturing a values discussion in a host community agreement. And we have, in fact, asked many weeks ago for a model host community agreement for recreational from KP Law that we don't have yet. We've had a number of opinions from them, but we don't have that yet. And we don't have a perfectly obvious way of addressing the values question at the zoning board of appeals either, because it's either, it fits or it doesn't fit. It meets these conditions or it doesn't meet these conditions. That's not that bigger values question. Then there's the question as to whether or not we should even have a values question, because we don't have values questions around whether or not a restaurant opens. And we think, wow, it's a crazy idea to open that kind of restaurant. Good luck to you, because you're paying the money, you're meeting the rules. Go for it. Some people feel that marijuana is a little different, because it's a new market. And we do want to think about things. And as Ms. Krueger pointed out, the CCC has said to us, "Well, you could do some sort of RFP process." We didn't do that for medical. And so we don't have the history of trying to do that. And it's also really weird, because it's not like a situation where we can say, "Here's this empty mill building. People tell, tell us what you want to do with that empty mill building." We don't own these properties. We're, we're not. So I don't even really understand how we would do an RFP in a situation like that, beyond learning from other people that have something other than mill buildings, to do that. And so none of this is completely obvious as to how to fix the conversation, but it seems like it's probably time for us as a group here, since we hear from the larger community, so that we can feed to the town manager and he can talk to Mr. Kravitz, to figure out what aspects of this we want to try and tease out further. Because again, under the town government, act under the charter. He can make tons of decisions as the town manager, but if we want him to incorporate any of our ideas and our thinking about this and ways of approaching some of these things, we're going to need to have a conversation at some point.
And I think that, in, in some ways, this certainly is a topic that's, you know, not admitting of delay, as they say.
Yes, it's really not, unfortunately.
Because it's, you know, it's, and, and, you know, it's, it's kind of like the arguments we made at town meeting relative to the zoning, in that if you don't have it in place, it's left to the building commission to make a certain determination. And then you've essentially grandfathered in certain rules, even if you change them later. And so you don't, it's hard to retroactively sort of apply the rules. And so I think we will need to sort of take this up in some fashion. Yes.
So, yeah, I think that's, it's really important for that conversation, because I think that memo that I think Mr. Kravitz shared with you a couple of weeks ago, that you had a chance to talk about this today, was a way to start for us to frame what are the issues. The town meeting action to create zoning, A, there's a, there's a tense pressure to be first to market. And so there's a lot of economic anxiety among developers or people who want to take, get the license and be the first one out there, because that's really important in this, in this industry. The KP Law has recognized this. They've been working on a generic host community agreement for all their communities. They've put a ton of time into it. It's taken a lot more time than we had anticipated. But this is going to be something that's going to go out to all of their member communities, but it's going to be significantly different than our, the typical host community agreement that you, that we see. And, you know, there are real consequences to decisions that are going to be made. So if, the way that zoning passed by town meeting means that you get one- one license in, say, the center of town, and then you're X-ing out everybody else, and how do you allocate that license? And barring any other discussion, the building commissioner, in essence, could, could issue a permit, and that would be without, we need to have the, they also need some things, host community agreement, all these other things. But we need to have an informed discussion about what are the values. If we have one thing, you know, do we auction it? Do we RFP it? Do we just say, this is going to generate the most economic activity for us? You know, if you said you could have one restaurant, do you want Shea Albury, or do you want McDonald's? And you get to choose, and what are the values? One, one could be better than the other, who knows? So I think it is, it's a complicated topic, which you, because you've spent an enormous amount of time talking about it, and you know it better than most, 99.9% of people in the state. But we do need support and thinking about through these, what these things are, and what the values are of the community. Because there are, there is, we get, I mean, I'm sure he told you, but we get inquiries all the time for people who want to cultivate or to, to open shops. And some people don't know what they're doing. Some people are very sophisticated. And he's, he's, what do, and my question is, do we want to embrace it? You know, we, we sort of said, we know where we want to be with medical. We said we want four. That was great guidance. But do we want to embrace it, or do we want to say, you know, we represent from other boards who are saying, don't say yes to these, too many of them. We don't want to bring this into the town. It's hard.
That was kind of what was happening in our meeting, because we were not, they weren't wrong positions. We were staking out different, you know, on a spectrum of, of places. And it's like, we're just an internal working group.
Right.
We don't get to decide this. And even just the pres, I mean, these are real, these have real-time consequences. Just the existence of this memo had a chilling effect on somebody, rightly or wrongly, had a chilling effect on someone who's interested in one of the downtown properties. I didn't real, understand that was related to the cancellation of a, of a community meeting, that, you know, downtown property owner who ran into one of us who's already, you know, upset. So it is timely. Some people in the working group conversations said, well, of course, this should all wait until the council's seated. You can't make any more decisions about. I disagree. But until we have the conversation and are clear, we each bring our own perspectives, or the boards that we represent's perspectives, you know, why rush it now? Just slow it all down and go slow. This amount is enough, or what, you know, we had a really interesting, but somewhat, it wasn't contentious, but spirited discussion.
Spirited. Yeah, let's come.
And, you know, these discussions take a lot of energy, like, no, I don't like this, or I like this. Or I think we heard each other's point of views, but we were sort of starting to re-litigate it, you know, by the last half an hour, we were saying the things we said at the beginning.
And, and one of the things where it starts to get complicated, well, it's already complicated, but another area which it starts to get, it continues to be complicated, is associated with an additional letter of support or non-opposition for a particular property that's trying to make a transition at this point in time.
Left them hanging.
And then there is also the difficulty of my, which I then try and match up. On the one hand, yes, we are trying to do this. We are out in front of it. We are making it happen. We are embracing it. And at the same time, I'm having some difficulty understanding how I translate the community's values associated with medical and recreational slash adult use, because any place that advert, that says they want medical right now, doesn't. That's the reality. What they want is they want to leg up for adult use and recreational. Do we not have a problem with that? Well, okay, then we don't have a problem with that. But I, I feel like we need to have that conversation, and we've, we've put it off, because we had everything going on with town meeting, and the charter wrote, and everything else that just was like impossible. But I don't think we can put it off until the council, because applicants will start to come in, and they will, they, they have to have a host community agreement before they can get very far with the state. They can like, fill out some sections of the application. So when you read what the state's doing, they're like, so many people have filled out four sections of the application, but not five. And so they will be coming to us. They do have to have that community meeting. They do have to have the host community agreement. There's just so many layers now, and yet it's still early days, that we're still kind of dealing with the old stuff, as we're trying to deal with the new. So we're in the, we're in an awkward place on a number of different fronts. And so we do need to be able to have staff be able to give accurate advice to people who aren't quite willing to go public yet, but are trying to do exploratory stuff, so that we don't later say, aw shucks, we wish they hadn't done that, because if we're not giving anybody anything to work with, they can't do it.
Mr. Steinberg, do you have a report?
Oh, okay.
So I think that that's, you know, just to the marijuana question, it's, it's, you know, valuable for me as far as agenda setting and thinking about when and how much of that conversation we'll need to put into our agenda setting and, and that sort of thing. But if there's not other select board member reports, I'm not sure there's anything else on our agenda.
I wanted to ask that when we do have that, we already said today at internal working group that you wouldn't put it on the agenda for the 11th. So don't.
Because we want to let people know.
Right.
And we want, because we want to be able to specifically invite people. We want to be able to invite people from the business community. We want to be able to invite the entire board of health, for example, so that even, you know, if we don't make any kind of decision, and what of course that means, though, is we need more time on the agenda, because if we're going to hear from other people.
It may also beg the question whether it should be a separate meeting for just that conversation and feedback from people. So we'll have to think about that.
That time doesn't get eaten up by-
Right.
Thank you for considering all those alternatives.
I don't know if we would take up the other, the piece of that, is, you know, the herbology request and the medical as part of that broader conversation, or do we need to get back to that as another action item?
My suggestion would be that we try and have the conversation completely separate of that, even though we know that exists, just like we know there are people looking to develop downtown. So I think that rather than trying to say, we'll put herbology on the same agenda and see where we get an hour into it, seems unfair to them as well. But, but knowing their time concerns, et cetera, that causes me to think sooner rather than August, you know, to have this conversation.
Could that be as soon as June 11?
Could, no way. I, I don't think I explained that right at all, then. Herbology's not going to come be, in my opinion, is not going to come before us until after we have this entire discussion.
Okay, after. I thought you were saying that that was time sensitive.
Well, it is, in terms of June and to them, but versus September to us.
I misunderstood what you were asking.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. And I didn't want to try and put them on the same night.
No, not the same, but I thought you were saying before, but, okay, good.
I do have just one announcement.
Please.
Race Amity Day, members, town meeting approved, passed this resolution, I believe unanimously, in 2015. Mr. Slaughter, I believe, is going to present it at the event, which is on Sunday, June 10. It's always the second Sunday, and as usual, it's from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., but this year, it's at the Unitarian Church Hall, so it is indoors. You do not need to RSVP. Please show up for stories, fellowship, fun, music, and dance. And the Race Amity Day proclamation is available online, because we did it way back in February. But, thank you.
If there is not other things, which I think we're, we've exhausted our agenda, if not ourselves.
And ourselves.
I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
If you favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned at 10:30, 8:00 p.m.